Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Regular Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, February 26. I want to first state that we're on the, we're holding this meeting on the traditional territory of the Nanimo First Nations. We have a scheduled recess for 6:30 PM. Our clerk tonight is Ms. Snellgrove. Ms. Snellgrove, any late items, please?
Item 13, Delegations Not Related to Report to Counsel. Remove the following delegations. 13A, Illyn Goldenblatt regarding the vote yes to Nanimo Recycling Exchange Campaign. 13B, Ben Gesselbrat regarding the Nanimo Recycling Exchange. 13C, Jan Hastings regarding Zero Waste. And 13E, Scott Bradford regarding State of the Child Report. Agenda item 12A, Community Engagement Task Force Final Report. Remove wording "Final Report" from the title and add a PowerPoint presentation from me, Skye Snellgrove, on behalf of Sheila Gurry, City Clerk. And I understand that Counselor Thorpe has a late item.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes, thank you. Chair, this is a request to move forward in the agenda. Dr. Hasselback, who is currently listed as delegation letter I. Dr. Hasselback has another commitment this evening. He'd appreciate it if he could be moved forward.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Counselor Kip. So on that item, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed?
So he's going to presentation, sir? 5A?
I would say 5A, yes.
Um, yes, we can get that. Sorry, could you please repeat that?
Counselor, Dr. Hasselback will go to, will move to 5A. 5A, we'll move to 5B.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now a motion for the adoption of the agenda as amended.
I got an item, sir.
Okay, Counselor Hong.
Thank you. I wanted to add Kenneth Young as a delegation with regards to the, um, the Korea, the World Peace One, that he was supposed to, uh, World Peace Initiative that was supposed to be added, but it got missed. He was communicated to Donna that he would have 10 minutes here, but he wasn't on today's agenda, so I'd like to give him 10 minutes.
For a late delegation?
Yeah, but I think it was a miscommunication.
I believe there was a miscommunication in the Legislative Services Department and his delegation wasn't added.
Okay. Okay, so it's been moved by Counselor Hong, seconded by Counselor Kip. And where do you propose we put that, Ms. Snellgrove? Other business?
Uh, yes, or that could go at the end of Section 13, Delegations Not Related to Report to Counsel.
Thank you. And it's Mr. Kenneth?
Young.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Call the question. Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, any others, counselors? Thank you. Motion for the adoption of the agenda as amended. Counselor Yocum, seconded by Counselor Hong. Call the question. Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So the next item is under four, motion for the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting, pardon me, the Regular Committee of the Whole Meeting for January the 8th. Moved by Counselor Thorpe, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, call the question. Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So now we get into presentations. The first one is Dr. Hasselback.
Good evening, and thank you, your worship, members of council, and thank you for accommodating my schedule. I really do appreciate that. This is the first chance that I've had to come before you for some time. Wanted to provide an update about what is happening with our overdose opioid crisis. I know there's lots of issues that are happening out there. I've seen some of the conversations around the table here. Need some clarification, need to bring things back on track in terms of engagement with the city relative to a couple of items and some very specific advice to counsel as your medical health officer. This is a curve that's becoming far too familiar, but I did want to share it. This is updated in terms of the rate of fatalities from overdoses, opioid overdoses occurring in Nanimo in comparison to Venkraviran in B.C. It had started in about 2013 and has continued at an accelerated rate and continues to accelerate provincially as well as locally. In total, unfortunately, we've lost 138 individuals since 2013, and the majority of that actually being in the last year. We are looking at a rate of fatalities that's 10 times higher than just a few years ago. Nothing else is changing that quickly. It's gone into top five of our causes of death in our own community, so let's not belittle in any fashion the change that has occurred and how important it is and how many of our friends and neighbors and families we've lost over this last period of time. Nanimo continues to have a rate that's about 50% higher than what we see in B.C. We could talk about what the rationale is for that and what we've learnt over that period of time, and some updated numbers that I wanted to share in terms of an understanding of the numbers of injection users that are estimated to be living within the Nanimo area, about 1,400 at this point in time. And things are changing. I think that often there's a perception there's a stagnant crisis out there and that we're not having to adjust what's occurring, and yet you walk the streets and I think everyone knows things are changing out there, and it's often a misdirection in terms of a misunderstanding about what has occurred. Certainly, late in 2016, we saw the introduction of some of the fentanyl analogues, particularly carfentanil, but not the only one. That led to a further increase in fatality rates over the first two-thirds of 2017. We saw some reduction provincially, but we, we have small enough numbers on a month-to-month basis, but I honestly can't say that I've seen a reduction happening in Nanimo over the whole of 2017. One of the things we're finding here and in other communities are increased concerns over aggressive and unusual behaviors happening amongst individuals, and too often that's attributed to the opiate crisis. Those on opioids or narcotics don't tend to act that way. We do think we're getting some problems from traumatic brain injury, from repeated problems here that aren't being treated immediately, but the most likely change that we're seeing is actual change in terms of what is being used on the streets with a resurgence in the use of, use of crystal meth, and some of you will remember that from about a decade ago, much more likely to be associated with those aggressive and unusual behaviors that we're seeing out on the streets these days. And again, that's not unique to Nanimo, and we're seeing that in many communities. You've seen this graphic before, and I share it with you only to remind you that there is no one single solution here, that we actually have to be looking at every solution and every one of these boxes separately. So in that process of looking at this, and council members will have received hopefully a copy of a report that I have generated, and it's getting the least in essence to council at this point in time and now publicly available. Council, however, has the only copies that actually have the names assigned to the petition, so I'd like you to respect that because I'm not sure that I can release that information. It's yours for release. Having said that, what I did do is had an opportunity to work with my partners out there and take a look at what has been occurring in most of these boxes and provide an update to you in terms of all the activity that is out there, not unique, and sometimes certain activity gets more attention in the public's eye or even around your eyes, I suspect, than the work that is going on in the background. As a reminder, and before we get into the discussion on the community action teams, the Nanimo Overdose Prevention Working Group was established in December of 2014. It was the first of those groups, really, to be established provincially, and really was whoever wanted to come together and sort of say, hey, we've got a problem in the community, let's see what we can do about it. It specifically decided at that point in time to be an informal structure, and its operations were fairly informal, and there was no resourcing for that working group, very important in terms of the changes that are occurring nowadays. However, that model of service delivery is being replicated by many other communities and actually is becoming essentially the standard of practice going forward, not just in our own province, but in other provinces as well. What we have seen over those last few years are really significant expansions in a variety of activities. Not only do we have much more real-time information available to us, or essentially real-time on what is occurring, both in terms of drug utilization, impacts in our communities. We've rapidly increased the amount of naloxone available, the antidote to an overdose. I rarely hear about a situation where naloxone wasn't present. Unfortunately, sometimes it's present, but it wasn't utilized, and so we still have a bit of learning to undertake, but there's a lot of naloxone out there. And our fire department, your fire department, our C and P were innovators and some of the first adopters in being able to take this practice on. The Division of Family Practice was one of the first in the province to try to better delineate how we can take individuals who are looking for care and get them to care, and that's been implemented. We have an emergency room follow-up process, and we've worked with the Nanimo Correction Center in terms of ensuring that individuals who come into corrections, which is an ideal initiation environment, are able to have a follow-up when they come back to Nanimo. We've had changes in our key management approach. We've had support to healthcare providers. Lots is out there. I've heard that there hasn't been a change in our sobering, detox, stabilization has been a rapid increase in the last few years in terms of the ability to bring individuals where that's an appropriate service, a little bit different from the rehab types of services that may not be appropriate here. And we certainly have an overdose prevention site, and the one in Nanimo is one of the more successful ones here on the island. And our mental health substance use folks have expanded their service, walk-in, made it much more accessible for individuals so that someone who wants care today can get It's, the works isn't done, okay? And I didn't want to stand up here and suggest to you that amongst those few highlighted items, of which there are many more in the report, that there isn't something that needs to be undertaken. Probably the most important thing is we need to go back and start looking at ourselves in terms of what this compassion looked like within this community. Unfortunately, this is quite a divisive issue. I think all of us would like the drug problem to go away. The reality is, these are humans, they're individuals, they are within our community, and sometimes we're not treating them with a compassionate approach, and that is going to be one of our big challenges in the next few years. Talked about the community action team, the problems that it announced. I know council is aware, you've responded in terms of your letter to the minister indicating your willingness to participate. Thank you. And what we really want is a formalization at this point in time, and it'll be one of the recommendations. Another area that hasn't done very well is in the prevention programming, and clearly you know the challenges on housing. It is still fundamental in terms of what one of the solutions is. We need more in terms of community recovery supports. That includes community groups, meaningful purpose of individuals is often one of the things that's identified as a clear component to likelihood of success. A couple of other components there. The other one that we really haven't been all that successful on, we've been working on very hard, is ensuring that peers or those with lived experience, both those currently using as well as pasted, are much more involved in the decision-making and supportive because that is going to be one of the key components going forward to ensure that everyone in our community is addressing all the issues, not just the drug issue, not just the drug issue. But if we isolate and alienate those that are affected, we're going to get some pushback, and you've seen it. Community Action Team, it builds from the foundation that's already in place, and the recommendation to you is that a formalization of that work that's already occurred be something that council endorses. We need to make that a more formal approach, and we need to use that cat collaborations in place to access some of the resources. While lots have been done, it's always been done as an add-on to somebody's job. It's never been an additional investment in resources to ensure that we could do things better, and I think that's what we have as an opportunity going over the next few weeks to months. So in closing, what is recommended to council, and I haven't focused on this in the talk here, but it certainly is in the report, we have a problem with the zoning bylaw. Okay, this is not just about supervised consumption. It is about all drug addiction treatment facilities here in the city of Nanimo. That includes some simple things like our physicians' offices that are prescribing Suboxone actually are non-compliant with the existing bylaw. We're not going to be able to move forward at other treatment facilities because of the zoning bylaw. Several times over the last year, your administration has tried to bring forward to you the need to change this. That hasn't actually made it to this table that I can tell. So I am here, under the role of the medical health officer, providing you advice. You need to look at this component, otherwise nothing happens, and nothing happening is the worst-case scenario. That's what we've seen for the last six months, and that was a decision that was made here at council. You need to support housing availability and options. Okay, I can go out there and ask all I can to B.C. Housing to make them available, but it's still going to be up to yourselves to make those decisions about when that occurs. And if we don't get housing out there, I can tell you, that's the first of the fundamental values, needs of individuals, not just those with a dependency disorder to opioids, okay? It goes to the mental health, it goes to others with those bizarre behaviors. If we don't provide them housing, we can't do anything else that's going to be successful. I'd encourage you to revisit the recommendations from your own administration that came forward in December. You did a good job of approving the security components, but not so good in terms of addressing all the other components which were part of community consultations, trying to identify what is needed in this community. Yes, there's a price tag. I'm not here asking you for those dollars. It's something that is under the purview of this council in order to move forward. You can choose or not to endorse the Nanimo Overdose Prevention Working Group as a community action team. It's probably going to go forward anyway. It's not a decision of this council, but I think that group would actually like the support of council and like to be able to have this level of accountability back to council. And that council continue and encourage the dialogue on preventing substance use, reducing deaths, because that's what this is all about, increasing those outcomes that we're trying to achieve, reduce the fear, stigma, increase the public safety and compassion. Okay, you have a role to play, and I encourage you to do so. And with that, your worship, Mayor, members of council, I look forward to any of your questions.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you, Dr. Hasselback. Appreciate you coming on this specific topic, and I just have a couple of questions, the first being alarming statistics, but what do you attribute the significant spike in deaths attributed to Nanimo specifically being 50% higher than the B.C. average? Is there some, I'm sure this is a much longer conversation than we probably even have time for, but there seems to me that there must be some reason or rationalization to help us understand why we're 50% higher.
Through your worship, and thank you, Counselor Beswick, I think there's a couple of things that I would suggest, and I don't think anybody absolutely knows. One, if we look at the number of currently estimated injection users in Nanimo on a per-population basis, that's significantly higher. Okay, I think when I came to council previously, I was using numbers around 800. That increase is probably a good portion of what we're looking at. Second is that we have been an area where we're probably receiving some of the early product that's getting distributed when it comes in from the, it comes in through the Pacific coast. It's why B.C. has been hit so hard, and it's come to Nanimo, and it gets distributed on the streets in Nanimo before it gets cut down or diluted so much that it's not going to cause an overdose. So we're on the front lines here, just as the downtown east side, okay? And we're comparable to the downtown east side, and that I don't think is going to change. And those are the two major ones that I throw out there. Neither of those is something that you can control, and I've got to stress that. That's upstream in terms of why do we see so many injection users here and why are we getting the drug product first?
Thank you very much. I just have another, a comment. The community action team, I understood that we, you're recommending that we formalize it. I understood that we had one, and now it's sort of disappeared, and so to speak, is what I understand, but I could be wrong on that. And so that we need to reinvent that in a more formal way. That's my next question. And then you indicated areas of future emphasis on a slide, and there wasn't anything notable there about lobbying the province aggressively, assertively, with assisting the municipalities, and particularly when I see that graph that indicates how dire our situation is here. We need help, and the province needs to also, in my humble opinion, make stronger effort. You spoke to, not sure what we can do to enforce, but maybe enforcement, maybe there's other things that, and the community action team, and somebody to finance these things in order to lessen the burden, because to me, there's a considerable amount of download on every municipality, not just ours. The province needs to step up to the plate and help us, because we sure need help, obviously.
Through your worship, thanks. We have a working group. That working group is still in place. It will migrate to be in the community action team because the community action team is a provincial entity. There is no formalization process. Council has been given the option here to actually recognize the work that has been done by the working group and endorse its activities going forward as a community action team. So there is continuity here. There's no group that stopped meeting, or, so it will continue to meet, and it will, so hopefully I can clarify that. In terms of advocacy to the province, sure, okay, I can add that. I'm saying I, I think there's lots that we could have discussion about, about how to advocate to the province, what should be advocated, what would likely to be successful. And the province needs to hear from every community, including Nanimo, and actually, you know, community action team is here because the province is concerned about what is going on in Nanimo, and hence one of the designations of the community action team. So yeah, I can add that to the list. I have no problem with that. There's lots more that could be done.
Thank you.
Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hasselback, for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. The first one, I guess, with regards to the community action team, is that we've decided to keep the community policing services office open, or whatever, we're going to rename it. I think we had this discussion amongst how we would get V.H.A. involved to be participant at the core of the downtown in that office. Is there any appetite from your end to have some sort of a support or person there to help, you know, make that facility well-rounded for the community?
Through your worship, at this point in time, we haven't even put a proposal in about how we can use our funding. The highest priorities keep coming back as coordination, and that means a body, peer engagement, and better communication. Where that occurs from? I'm going to say that's why the city is an active participant in the group, and I'm sure space will come up as an issue.
Great, thank you. And then a couple more questions. Another one is with regards to those stats that we see. Can you, can you break it down to, I know that we keep talking about homelessness and these issues, are those numbers that you showed us that died, the 138, are those homeless people, or are those just deaths from drug overdose? Are we referring to ones that have died in homes?
And through your worship, about 85% of our fatalities north of the Malahatt are occurring in a private residence. So no, they're not street-oriented individuals, okay? They tend to be between the ages of 20 and 60, okay? They tend to be male significantly that way, and they tend to have been using alone at the time that the fatality occurred.
Okay, great, thank you. And if I can continue, just two more questions. With regards to, I think our community has come forward to us and said that, you know, there's a rash of issues with needles being on the streets. Do you have a suggestion for us on how we can curb that issue? Do we need more needle boxes? What's your take on, on this to make our schools and our playgrounds safer from needles? Is there an option of giving, taking one needle in, getting one needle back kind of exchange, or how would you see that working?
Through your worship, if we're talking that way, we're going back about 20 years, so I'd encourage you not to be archaic. I think we know a lot more about that. If we have a thousand users who are using three times a day, do a little bit of math in your own head and figure out how many needles are being used, and we get concerned when we see 40, 50, 60 of them. The return rate is about 98, 99%, okay? It's that small percentage that's breaking through that is clearly causing significant angst. Unfortunately, it's not causing the same angst as 138 people who have died.
Yeah.
In terms of what can be done, I think that there's at least some conversation, encourage it, about a variety of agencies out there. There's John Howard, the Canadian Mental Health Association, I think there are a couple of others who are actually doing street sweeps, trying to be sure that our streets are safer, okay? Our overdose prevention site is not open 24 hours. People are using, are likely to be using three to six times a day. It's not surprising that there's some use happening in the community, and we're not going to change that until you change the ground rules under which things are operating right now. That's not to say it's going to solve all the questions about where the needles, where injections are occurring. It hasn't elsewhere. But we're going back to the late 1990s. It's the same challenges, the same problems. It's going to require that engagement. There should be more needle boxes, and I know that your administration has requested that, and we're involved in that discussion about making sure we get more out there. There's no one simple solution, and as far as I can tell, just about every community that I'm working with is grappling with the same issues. So it's not that there's been a change about who's using, where they're using, and whatnot. It's this broader change in terms of the drug utilization that is contributing here.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you, Dr. Hasselback. Having sat on that overdose prevention, overdose prevention group since its inception, I know all the good work that you've been doing, but one of the things I do struggle with is that when you're asking us to do rezoning, especially in, you know, neighborhoods, we have to take consideration, you know, the neighbors. Like, there's a lot of concerns. We had the superintendent Miller here the other day talking about the increase in crime on Wesley Street. So when you're talking about you would like to see some rezoning, are you looking at specific areas for a safe injection site, or is any place in the city open? Thank you.
Thank you, through your worship, to Counselor Armstrong. A few things that are in there. One is the zoning bylaw at this point in time is precluding us moving forward on a whole bunch of things, okay? Safe consumption is just one of many, and we can talk about that, but that's not my purpose in coming here tonight, okay? You've made your opinions quite clear last May, and it hasn't looked like things have changed, and so we're stuck with an incomplete service that's not providing all that we could have gotten with a supervised consumption that could have been a lot more helpful. There are concerns about the location, and I, and our colleagues from CMHA happen to be here listening, we're open to looking at other sites, but you all know, no matter what site we look at, you're actually going to get the same reaction, okay? And so have that conversation. I don't think anybody's opposed to it, but no, don't stick it down the south end. It's going to be in the location where the fatalities are occurring, 40% of which are occurring in the downtown core area. We actually are quite disseminated in terms of where activity is occurring, but... Uh, we actually are quite disseminated in terms of where activity is occurring, but basically the site currently servicing about 50% of where the overdose fatalities are occurring. And we probably have seen a benefit from the existing site. It's a tough one to look at. We're looking really carefully to determine, but we're certainly seeing large utilization. We're seeing a lot of something that's happening that we have not seen with this group for a while. And that is the development of trust. And until we get trust, we're not going to be moving forward. Right now, some other decisions have compromised that trust. Okay? And that's why I say it's a community response. But if we could move forward with a supervised consumption, that means bringing in additional supports, engagement, compassion, hope, sincerity, things that, uh, actually are major contributors to resolving, uh, longstanding, uh, dependency disorder issues.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller.
Ding dong. Uh, first off, I'll touch on your last comments with the regards to the supervised consumption. Uh, my understanding is that the first site to open in Victoria was in a residence for residents and guests. That was the one on Johnson Street. And Pandora is a more general one which is opening soon. And then there are, what, four others?
So, shortly, through counsel, I think you're right, but I'm actually not sure because I'm not involved in the Victoria. But it is Portland Housing Society that currently is approved and currently is providing services and is a residential location.
Yes, exactly. It's for tenants and guests. I, I've looked at it. I was quite amazed when it came out because I believe I was told at one time that it really didn't make sense to do that. Now, we have three low-barrier buildings in Nanaimo, Uplands Boundary, Wesley. We have a number of walk-in clinics. And I said this the last time I think you came up here. There should definitely be something, some changes to the zoning bylaw. But personally, I would like to see safe consu, supervised consumption throughout the community, in walk-in clinics, in tenancy situations. Uh, the one at Wesley right now is it. So, that's where people are going. And the tenants are, they're pissed off. And many of the tenants are the drug users as well. They don't even like it because there's a lack of respect for the building. This is what I'm hearing from the tenants. At one time, I believe they tried to for, fill out a petition. That petition was taken away by staff and they were told not to do it again. That's what I've heard. May not be true. But I tend to believe some of these things because I've known many of the people for decades and many of the, the people that have died I've known personally for over 20 years. So, it, it is huge. Like you say, Nanaimo has a huge problem. And personally, I believe, much like I guess Victoria does, that you locate these sites throughout the community. And what better places than in the supportive housing and in the walk-in clinics? Small scale, easy to set up, and you can do everything you talked about in them. Uh, you mentioned the change to the zoning bylaw. I'm, I pulled it up on my iPad and I'm wondering what you meant by change. It mentions safe injection sites under drug addiction treatment facilities. What would the changes be that would be recommended to it?
Okay, through your worship, one is I will not propagate misinformation. And I don't think we should be having conversations that aren't justified here in terms of rumor and allegations. So, I just got to say that, Counselor Fuller.
Whatever.
Uh, I fully agree with the distributive model.
Yeah.
Okay? Absolutely. I have no problem with that. Yes, there's financial implications. Yes, we've been looking at it from an Island Health site, uh, facility. Certainly clinics in other locations might make some sense as well. Unfortunately, they don't meet the requirements, one, of an overdose prevention site which have current class exemptions under the Controlled Substances Act. Or in two, we don't have the supervised, um, sorry, we don't, the overdose prevention sites currently have a Health Canada class exemption for the province because of the state of emergency. Okay? And this is a legal issue. Supervised consumption is a federal, uh, exemption, the section 52.1 in the Controlled Substances Act. That's all it is. It's nothing more than that. It's just it provides for better, uh, services as well because of the requirements for that I'd love to see changes to the Controlled Substances Act that would make this more readily available. Okay? Advocacy role. Okay? We have to work within the parameters that we're thrown at right now, so I'm telling you what those parameters are.
Yeah, and, and all I was saying that is that Victoria seems to be able to do it and Nanaimo can't.
Well, and at the moment, we can't look at any of these other sites, uh, or other distribution because of the challenge. I would recommend that counsel ask your own planning department, administration, to talk to you about the zoning bylaw and the implications of that particular section and why it is a preclusion for us moving forward. I'm not the expert on zoning bylaws, but certainly I've had that thrown at me enough times, uh, in terms of our ongoing conversations here.
Okay, a couple other questions. Might as well get them all over with. Uh, the Nanaimo Overdose Prevention Management Working Group, who is involved in that? Is it still open to other groups to get involved with?
Uh, thanks and through your worship. Um, at the moment, it, it includes most of your major, uh, groups in the community. So, RCMP, school district, the city, um, uh, NRCF, Harris House, AVI, um, CMHA, um, Stenuma First Nation, Telekom Friendship Center, uh, First Nations Health Authority. Uh, and I, my reason for always being a little bit, is I'm going to forget somebody. There are about 40 people on the current distribution list.
Awesome.
Uh, and multiple locations within Island Health. Uh, is it open at the moment because we haven't formalized any terms of reference, which is an expectation in the Community Action Team? I think, so I'm hesitant to say it's open. I think that we actually have to get the terms of reference in place.
Okay.
And that might provide some direction as to who's participating and clarifying.
Uh, thanks, that's great information. Uh, I'm looking at the numbers and Nanaimo has seen expansion to a total of 30 beds, of which 17 are detox, sobering, stabilization. Are 12 of those 17, or no, not 12, are a number of those 17s the new sobering beds up on, uh, Seafield Crescent?
I was hoping that my M H S U manager would be here to be able to answer that question. I know that 12 bed included an expansion in terms of access to Clearview.
Yeah.
Uh, there was another location, Serenity.
I believe it's Seafield.
And I think a third location where there are some beds available as well.
Yeah. I believe it's Seafield because some of my former clients were using those on an almost daily basis. Uh, it was actually seen by many in the community as actually being 12 more shelter beds, or however many beds it has, which I thought was great because they're all low barrier. You can go in there and be under the influence, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and I'm wondering, because when the Unitarian Shelter closes, there go our low-barrier beds there, which are 34. And have you heard anything with regards to the Salvation Army, which is high barrier at this point in time, moving to a low-barrier model? I heard mention of it and I'm just wondering if you have as well.
Through your worship, and actually, I've not heard and I've not had discussions relative to that. That's why I actually do depend on a few others that aren't here yet.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, probably aren't going to make it at this point.
Yeah, because I, I think that's key to, like you say, having the easy, accessible services that you can get that build the relationships, et cetera, et cetera.
Through your worship, can I suggest to counsel, if you've got questions that I can't resolve, please send them to me and I will commit to getting an answer and sharing it with all of you.
And my last question, you mentioned that, that this is going to be available to the community. Is that on V H A's site or this report?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And the, the report's public.
Yeah.
Uh, it's been issued by the M H O office, so it will be posted to, uh, the Island Health website. It will be distributed to, uh, the working group, which actually most of them have received it, um, and some key partners. And certainly, we're happy to share it. It's, um...
Well, the, the reason I ask is there's a great picture in here, new substance use beds, three-year strategy. And I can't read any of it. It's blurred. So, I was hoping I could get it online where you can actually pull it up digitally and zoom in. So, I look forward to it if it does. Thank you.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Dr. Hasselbeck, thank you for your time coming this evening and updating us on this, uh, very serious and important issue. I just have one question and I apologize because I think you've, you've at least partially answered it, uh, via Counselor Armstrong's question a few minutes ago. But it has to do with just my clarification on your top bullet point there of recommendations, that counsel addressed the obstacle to substance abuse treatment found in the definition of zoning bylaw 4500. So, are you, are you asking for a general, um, redefinition or examination of the, the definition in that bylaw? Or are you thinking specifically of Wesley Street?
Um, through your worship, it is a general reexamination. This is the only community that I'm aware of that actually have that definition in, requiring a site-specific zoning. Uh, and it is an obstacle not just to an overdose prevention site, but also to other treatment options within the community.
That's what I understood from your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Yocum.
Um, thank you. Um, thank you, sir, for presenting this evening. I won't belabor, uh, just want to make, make sure, be a little more productive and useful for you. So, as if somewhat feel, I feel, I feel a little bit of angst slash frustration from you and warranted. And I say that respectfully, um, as, as one would be. So, a question I would have, the first bullet's been, um, addressed. That was my concern, not concern, way we can work through that. And I know there's no magic bullet. What, I'm just thinking here, what I hear is right now of a few, few items is we need, we need a bodies, we need a team, a quarterback or so, to, to coordinate, implement this with, from the city and, and some other stakeholders. So, I believe internally, I hear you, and we've got to create some funding or a grant for somewhere to do this and work with people. We, we don't, our social wellness at the city is pretty bare-bones at best. So, I think we have to, I, I feel we have a responsibility. I'm just one person here, so I'd like us internally to create some dollars somewhere to, for, to take as long as, to be a support. Question I would have is, we're only at about 65 to 70% staffing capacity at the RCMP at this moment. But if we include, if we included from the, it would, more policing dollars help is, I know dollars help, but like, in a constructive way of to RCMP dollars, I'm thinking about where the city can contribute today. Today, um, create a wellness team, I'm thinking as a RCMP, add a body, whether it's through some other entity or through the city on this CAT team, are the questions I think a little bit supportive. But my main question is, and, and I'm really just trying to educate myself more and more on this subject since the last conversation, how has the mobile sites, because you heard me on my soapbox half a year ago on the mobile, I'm wondering how the Montreal and Kelowna ones worked out? And I, and I just haven't had the opportunity to research too much on that.
Okay, thanks and through your worship. Uh, appreciate your comments. I, I truly do.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I can't stand up here and tell you that I would see enforcement as the highest priority to move forward on. I think that we've got to be really directed in where we're going. And when I talk to my enforcement's colleagues, and they're the ones that should be speaking to this, um, we need to be further upstream. And upstream is before it gets into Nanaimo, uh, in terms of where enforcement activities are. So, I, I just put that out there, but I'm sure Inspector Miller might have other commentary. In terms of, uh, a second comment that I wanted to make is, I'm not here and I don't want this to look like there's an offload onto communities. This is a partnership. This is a crisis. Um, you know, when there's a spill that happens out in the Georgia Straits, we all come together, we all do what we can and we respond to it. Uh, the difference is, this is a crisis that's been going on for four years. Okay? And I think that everyone coming to the table has to be working in a concerted fashion. So, let's be sure that we're doing that. And I apologize, Counselor Yocum, you had one other thing and I...
It was the mobile.
Oh, the mobile, yes, thank you.
The mobile units in other cities.
So, uh, counsel asked and I, we have looked at it. Okay? And there are mobiles set up, well, I'm not, I'm hesitant to call them mobiles in Cologne and Kamloops. Uh, essentially, they're two stationary sites with a vehicle that travels between those two stationary sites. They're having problems with the vehicle, they're having problems with the logistics. They certainly are saying that they need a stationary site because it doesn't provide enough service in one location, uh, and they're looking at a different model. The one other mobile out there is in Montreal at this point in time. It doesn't actually seem to be making much of a contribution. Uh, and it is an augmentation to a series of stationary sites. And there seems to be some rationale behind that. So, before we ever have a conversation about mobile, um, we need to have a solid stationary program that, there's dependability on location. And I keep coming back, most of our users who have a dependency disorder are going to struggle to utilize less than three times a day. Okay? Three times a day. Some of them are going to be using up to six times a day. And I think that's where we get into the provision of injectables as part of the treatment or part of the therapeutic relationship. How do we get, um, you know, that's an option that we can't even talk about right now. Okay? Um, but having a mobile will never work in those sorts of settings.
Thank you. Just to wrap up, um, thank you, brought clarity, or, um, some clarity for myself. And then my final comment I would have isn't really a question, but I totally concur about the team approach. Like, I deal with child welfare as my, my other role in life and, um, job-wise. And of course, I want to educate you on the subject, but I think we should take the Jordan's Principle model and bring that in there. And all the dollars and entities work out and, and child welfare, Jordan's Principle, see, deal with a child, whatever the health needs or whatever addiction needs will be. And, uh, we could do the same here and let the city, the province, and the feds, and Island Health have a real hard conversation, but make sure we're tackling it as a team. So, I totally concur and thank you for your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have, uh, I have three questions for you. First one, it's in the report, I couldn't, I couldn't nail it down when I went looking for it here a moment ago. And that was at Wesley Street. It's my understanding there's been 8,000, uh, different, uh, individual uses in the last year. And of the 8,000, there was a, a half of 1% overdose, um, prevention. Is that, is that correct?
Point 8%, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, second one is, um, recently, we were offered, uh, we were offered, um, about seven and a half million dollars from the provincial government for modular housing. And our, my challenge is that our strategy is that, that there's two main criterias for any future housing in Nanaimo, as part of an overall plan. One of them is city-owned lands, must be city-owned lands, and of course, appropriately zoned, and must be spread throughout the city. Uh, that, that's caused us some challenge here right now because that yielded one piece of property. So, can you provide some advice with respect to that philosophy versus putting housing where it's needed?
Uh, through your worship, through your worship, um, I wish I had, I wish any of us had all the solutions. Okay? One, housing's required and a necessity because it provides stability in location and place. Uh, and then it's easier to bring services to that location. In the absence of housing, the services have to be located where the incidents are happening. Okay? Which is in the downtown core extending out. So, um, how individuals tend to be quite, I don't want to say totally content, I think the success rate's about 80%, 85%, but it's actually fairly good about moving into a housing type of setting. Uh, and then once they're stabilized there, we can then provide those additional services. So, its location is perhaps not as, uh, pertinent as a, in the conversation as it is to the acute types of services that need to be in closer proximity to where things are happening. Uh, is that answering your question? So, our challenge, I think, is the shortage of housing. Okay? Not the shortage of the location of that housing. Uh, and again, if I, I'm talking with several councils at this point in time, it's exactly the same conversation. Without housing, it's tough to be addressing some of those... Without housing, it's tough to be addressing some of those street-oriented issues, and it's not just about drug use. I keep stressing that. But you're not going to get resolution if we don't have something that people can call their place. Okay, and start with a place.
Thank you. Next question I have is with respect to 437 Wesley. There were all kinds of challenges that were expected when 437 Wesley came on site. And most of them didn't materialize in its first year or so of operation, at least first year. Then along came the overdose prevention site. And I have to say, my office is right there, you know, it's a stone's throw away. And our staff in our Service and Resource Center will tell you that the level of disorder around those facilities has increased significantly since that site was put, or that facility was put into place. Can you help me understand, moving from down the continuum, moving from that to a supervised injection site, what that would do on the road forward or the path forward? What that would do, what an enhanced facility would do to help alleviate or to reduce or to improve the lot of everyone in that neighborhood?
So, your worship, I think one of the things really comes down to, an overdose prevention site is merely a location where someone can come, utilize drugs. If there's an overdose, it will be managed. We try to augment that by perhaps a little bit of engagement and conversation, perhaps some additional services, but there isn't a network or a site that's there to provide those additional social supports. Perhaps we can get a little bit of social service support in place, okay, on an intermittent basis, but it's not integral to the overdose prevention site itself. That OPS is merely about individuals coming, using, and leaving. We are finding, and I'll be the first to admit it, we can't have smoking occurring within an overdose prevention site. And so we have had an increase in activity probably in the surrounding area of those that are actually afraid of an overdose, just coming in an approximation of the area and inhaling by smoking in case something goes wrong. Okay? We're also seeing increases not just in the proximity of 437 Wesley Street. And I think that there's a concurrence here that's occurred, that some of it, yeah, is probably related to clientele at 437 OPS. But most of it is probably just that general increase that's happened right across the community. Okay? And I don't, I can't prove that to you. I'm not going to stand up here and say, I know what it all is all about. But I'm sure if I go down into Bevan Park, or if I go into the downtown core, we're seeing exactly the same sorts of things happening in terms of increased behaviors, increased disorder. And if I go to Port Alberni, or if I go up into Parksville, I'm seeing exactly the same things happening. Okay? Yes, if we put a service in, it doesn't matter what service it is, we're going to get some change in the immediate surrounding area. Okay? So let's be sure we put the right services in, the right suite of services, and engage those individuals in a compassionate fashion so that there's a recognition. Most of the peers that I talk to are actually quite perturbed because they're seeing the security out there, they're seeing the fences going up, they're seeing their movement being restricted, and they're kind of saying, what the heck is going on here? Okay, why don't you treat me like a human being too? Okay? And we need to engage them so that they feel that humanity and are part of the solution, not have other solutions imposed on them.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions. We really appreciate you having this very difficult conversation with us. Thank you very much.
Your worship, members of council, and I'll try to come back more if you wish me to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the 2017 Community Development Review. And that's Mr. Dale Lindsey, Director of Community Developments, to provide the council with a review of the development in City of Nenaimo in 2017.
Thank you, your worship. It's that time once again, where I'm back before you to talk about what we've seen in the past year. Normally, I do a presentation that just talks about our stats. But this evening, I also want to touch on maybe just some of the other, quickly, some of the other initiatives that are going on within the department over 2017. And in no particular order, I'll start off with our Temporary Public Art Program. And this, people may or may not know, but this is actually done through our Community and Cultural Planning Section. Chris Barfoot is our team member, and he administers this program. It's been successful for a number of years. These are images from 2017, but the program, we just had, I think it was last week, we were before council, and we had selections confirmed for the 2018 project. So it's something that we'll be continuing on, we're excited about in 2018. A number of community programs, and I've lumped a bunch of them here together, but we have everything that includes our Culture and Heritage Awards, which is an annual program, something that was quite successful this year under funding from the federal government, under New Horizons for Seniors, was what was called the Seniors Connect Program. So we had both a Living History Speaker Series, but it was also resulted in a city builders' program in the bus stop, which is constructed on Bowlin Road. Other engagement sessions that were done through this department include work that's underway for the housing strategy, and the image in the middle top is actually a session, a workshop that was held, I believe it was just last week. A number of open houses and sessions about work on South Downtown Waterfront, and I've included under one title here, but there's actually two different projects. There's a secondary access project, which is ongoing, and also the One Port Drive Master Plan, which came before council and received preliminary approval late, I guess it was late last year. Waterfront Walkway was a significant project for our department in 2017. There was actually five separate open houses that were held in the spring and in the fall. There was a workshop involving our stakeholders, and ultimately resulted in a draft plan coming forward to council that was endorsed very late in 2017. What I would say of all the projects that we've ever been involved in, we had a significant amount of response from the community. And there's almost 2,000 written responses that came either online or through our open houses, which is certainly a high watermark when we talk about engagement in the community. Lots of interest and participation in this project. Our department's also responsible for real estate, so I've just highlighted here three of the significant acquisitions dispositions in 2017. We sold the portion of the Midill site that was just for about 1.3 million. We also sold the 100 Gordon Street site for just around three-quarters of a million. And we purchased the Rotary Bowl from the school board, and that was a project of about four million dollars. Getting to what I normally talk to you about is statistics. And this year, to start off with, I think last year I talked to you a little bit about some of the early data we were seeing coming out of the 2016 census, and I'll continue that this year. I have about three slides that talk a little bit about what the census is seeing. And full disclosure, I've actually stole these first three slides from a presentation that I think some of you were at in January with the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation. Brendan Batch, who's their Senior Market Analyst, did a presentation. And I thought there was some information here that would be of interest to the balance of council and the community. And one of the discussions we often have is, you know, the growth in the community and where is it coming from? We've had discussion for a long time that, you know, we're largely reliant, Canada as a whole, but certainly no different here in Nenaimo, we're reliant on migration. So if we break it down, and these are the numbers from the 2016 census here on the far right, where are people coming from when they move to Nenaimo? So sort of an interesting observation on, the largest portion are certainly people already that are within Canada, but a significant jump here from, or significant growth in people from Canada but not from B.C. are finding their way to our community. The next slide that I borrowed from that presentation, I was looking ahead at household formations, 2016 to 2020, and this projection, and it's, this is more than the city of Nenaimo, this is looking at a boundary probably more similar to the regional district of Nenaimo, but looking at about 1,000 annual housing, household formations in the upcoming years. And as you'll see in the later stats, this is very similar to the numbers that we have seen in Nenaimo for many years, and we're continuing to see, and that these projections are holding true in our stats. Another number that was quite interesting to us in that presentation that came out in the 2016 census information now is the composition in our community of renter versus owner. So you can see on the left, in 2011, we had about 74% owner-occupied homes in the community. 2016, that's dropped to 70%. What's really startling is that for one of every new households, there's five, sorry, new owner households, there's five renter households. And this was identified, again, by CMHC, but certainly an interesting stat, and one that I think when we talk about the types of units we're seeing built in the community, I think it's something that we'll see continue. Again, the 2016 population for the city of just over 90,000. Again, keeping on this theme of purpose-built rentals and this trend towards rental occupancy, of all of the development permit, of all the units that were approved in 2017, 65% of those were for purpose-built rentals. So in terms of raw numbers, what that means is there were 732 units that were actually approved by DP in 2017, 475 of those are for purpose-built rentals. So in 2017, we know that the vacancy rate continues to be very low, around 1.6%. So we'll be keeping an eye on that and seeing as these new purpose-built rental developments come in, come into the market. It'll be interesting to see how that number is impacted. In terms of single-family housing, we ended 2017 above the 10-year average. So our 10-year average is about 272 units. As you can see here, we're about 309. So we're down slightly from 2016, but again, above that long-term average. Of those single-family homes, there's actually a typo, I think, on this map, it's actually 56% of all of the homes that were constructed in 2017 contain secondary suites. 52% is the average that we've seen over the last 10 years. So we're slightly above average in terms of composition, but that number, although it spiked once suites were legalized, it kind of seems to have settled around that 60% to 50% number. Now, in terms of overall residential units in the community, there was 858 new units that were permitted last year. That is slightly above the 10-year average, which is 840. As you can see, you know, significant mix of multifamily and single-family, but in 2017, we actually see, and it's hard to see on this graph, but we actually see single-family as more units than multifamily. And that's the first time we saw that in about three years. I think there are, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, but there's a number of applications that were very close to making permit application at the end of 2017. So I do not think this is something you're going to see continue on 2018. In fact, I think my projection at this point is 2018, you're going to see a very significant shift the other way in terms of the number of units are going to be largely in favor of multifamily. Something that we often talk about is, we take a look at all the construction types in the community, and we put together what's called the construction value, total construction value. So our 10-year, or I guess it's our five-year average, six-year average is just about 184 million. So we're sitting above that average, and we're about the fourth year in a row, we're over $200 million. As noted here, a significant a part of that continues to be residential, no different than the trend we've seen the last number of years. One of the questions we always get are, you know, where, all these units that are being built in the community, where are you seeing them? This is something we started to do for council, I think, two or three years ago now, and just sort of give you a time lapse of permits over the course of the year and see where development's occurring. What you'll note is that it's not a, it's not a north end, it's not a south end, it's a, there's development from literally one end of the community to the other, from new neighborhoods to our older established neighborhoods. There's some small clusters around subdivision activity, but largely, largely the development is generally dispersed. There's a comparison here of what we've seen in 2017, versus what we saw the previous year in 2016, and it's largely a continuation of that same pattern. The one thing that we've committed to reporting on is some of our key processing times. What I've included here on this table is some of our projects, or sort of some of our processes and our targets. So for example, single-family dwellings, the one we talk about most often, our target right now is three weeks. In 2016, that was just over four. In 2017, we saw that stay at about four and a half weeks. Similar numbers here for rezoning, our target's 32 weeks, we were just under that in 2017. Development permits, we're well above our target, our target's eight weeks, we're closer to 20 weeks. We certainly had a high volume in development permits, which we'll talk about a little bit more. Development variance permit, we're just slightly above our target of six weeks at approximately seven weeks. Subdivision PLA stands for Preliminary Layout Approval, and that's where we give general approval for a subdivision application. Our target is eight weeks, but again, due largely to volume, we're sitting at approximately 16 weeks in 2017. The other thing I like to do for you, before you with this presentation, is sort of talk about the top five projects. Now, this isn't the top five in terms of value to the community, this is simply top five from a construction value perspective, where were the most significant investments in the community in 2017. So from five to one, number five was a two-story addition to the Nenaimo Christian School. This was an addition with total area of about 2,300 square meters, and you can see here a construction value of just under $4.5 million. A major, a major project, major institutional project, which was new buildings to support the second-stage treatment plant and renovations at the Greater Nenaimo Pollution Control Center, again, just over $4.5 million. We have a new grocery store on Bruce Street that's currently under construction, and that project came in at exactly $5 million. I would note that this is the first of about three stages as part of this development. We'll actually talk about upcoming stages later on this evening, but this is the portion which is now currently under construction and will result in new services in that neighborhood. Significant residential apartment building, this is a purpose-built rental building for 72 units, five-story building. This is on Lindley Valley Drive, but just off of Uplands, just over $6 million in construction The number one project in 2017 was actually the development of the old Annex Building, the former City Hall site, $9.5 million of construction value. This is a five-story, 46-unit mixed-use building. As you can see here in the images, the building's now currently under construction, and when it's completed, it will include a mix of residential and commercial development. Your worship, normally I stop there and don't talk about sort of what we see coming, I just sort of give you a sense of what we saw in 2017. But given the really, the high volume of projects and the number of projects which staff think have the potential to have some significant impact in terms of being transformative in the communities they're in or in the services they're providing, I want to spend just a little bit of time talking about other applications that are in-stream or very near to be in-stream. So for example, the 100 Gordon Street property, this is the hotel immediately behind us here. We are expecting a building permit to come in this month. This is for a nine-story, 155-room hotel. 91 Chapel Street, this is a residential project in our downtown core, there's, it's for 61 units, and that building permit's in-stream, as is a building permit for 15 Front Street, and this is for a 90-room hotel. Again, I mentioned earlier this evening, we had a building permit last year for Bruce Avenue for the grocery store, and we have a second, the second part of that is now in for building permit, and that's for further commercial retail. And the development permit anticipates further development, including residential on that Other significant projects, 585 Uplands was actually a project that was in front of council not too many weeks ago for a development permit. They've now submitted their building permits for 59 units, again, purpose-built rental. 6025 Lindley Valley Drive's in here, this is actually a project I just talked about that was building permit for last year, but certainly another addition to our rental stock. 6540 Metro Drive, so this is an exciting project for us. This is on the vacant property, which is right across from Home Depot, if you can picture it, sort of right on the curve of Metro Drive. So talking about introducing multifamily into what has been historically only a commercial district. So trying to move towards our objectives of multifamily, or sorry, mixed-use developments. The other project which I have outlined here but don't have images yet is a project in behind Michael, so this is sort of the last property before you leave the city of Nenaimo. And the current proposal there is also for three purpose-built rental buildings- buildings. So we're in for a development permit at this point, and I expect it'll be coming forward to council in the near future. Again, this idea of bringing more people living in and around these services is exactly what our official community plan's been calling for, for a number of years. In terms of other developments, we're seeing investments on Bruce and Fifth. This is for first, further community, for further services in the community, commercial and retail. And also on Third Street, this is, this is the old Highway Works here. We have a couple of building permits in for fourplexes, but we have a development permit in for significant investment in student housing and mixed-use development along that corridor. Other projects which I quickly talk about or touch on here is we have building permits in on Boxwood Road. This is the continuation of the significant investment we've seen in that part of the community. A couple of, a couple of new additions to that industrial park. And we also have rezoning application in for Twenty-Five-Sixty Bowen Road. And I would include that here, not only because of the scale of the investment, but also because of the impact it will have on our traffic circulation as I will introduce a new road that will be connecting Labio Road through, through to Bowen Road. In terms of subdivisions, what we saw in 2017, there's two hundred and twenty-seven new lots that were created. We have seventy-nine active files, but we have just under six hundred lots that have received PLA or, or are in-stream and could come forward to be received final potentially in 2018. The other number I like to report to you on every year is, as you know, through the subdivision process, if there's lots are generally for subdivisions of three or more, we're able to get five percent of that property as park or take the equivalent cash in lieu. So in 2017, we acquired just over two hectares of park as a result of this process and just under two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in cash in lieu. New assets, and I want to be clear, these are assets that are obtained as a result of new development in the community. So this is developers coming into the community and they're responsible for, for their works and services. The, this is the result of that work. This is not a summary of our capital works projects. That would be separate from that. So just in terms of new assets from development, about six thousand meters of, of new pipes in the ground, fifty-two new streetlights, fourteen fire hydrants, about three kilometers of new sidewalks, four hundred and sixty-one meters of new walkways, and just over a kilometer of new road. And of course, these are paid for and installed by the developer, but once they're installed, they become a city asset and they're now our responsibility to maintain on the long term, become part of our asset management Looking at our specific development applications, and when we talk about rezonings and development permits, we often look at these to give us some indication of what we see coming, coming in following years. So development permits will give us an indication of what will likely become a building permit in 2018. So we have some numbers here for you, very comparable to our, to our five-year averages, but the part I would just want to spend a moment to highlight is, although the number of applications is, is similar to what we're seeing for the averages for development permits, the total units, when you look at all of those applications, it's actually quite a spike. So Five Twenty-Three in 2016, over fourteen hundred multifamily units in all of our development permit projects in 2017. So it'll be interesting to see how those translate to building permits in, in 2018. Some other stats on our, on our other types of applications, so Board of Variants, we received eight applications in, in 2017. Six were approved by the board, one was denied. And I believe that leaves one that was withdrawn. Development variance permit, thirty-two applications, twenty-five that were approved, with the balance either continuing to be in-stream or, or denied. Your worship, that completes my presentation. I'm certainly happy to take any questions at council, isn't it?
Thank you. We have a couple of council questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lindsay. Very comprehensive and always look forward to your report. Just as it relates to your comment on the purchase of Rotary Bowl, it also included Sir Roxman Stadium. And I, I think it's important that the viewing audience understands that it was more than just Rotary Bowl. And on page fourteen, upcoming projects, fifteen, Front Street, you didn't elaborate on the specifics of that project. Would you mind on page fourteen in my package?
So the Front Street project is a ninety-unit boutique hotel. I mean, the building permit has been applied for on that property.
And the Chapel Street one?
The Chapel Street is a multifamily project. Sorry, I'm just trying to catch up with my numbers here. It's a sixty-one-unit multifamily project. So that, again, is in for building permit.
Thank you. And just impressive, I think, for our, our viewers, that fourth year, consecutive year with over two hundred million dollars of investment in our city. And, and thinking that there's a small portion of that which is really, which is public funds or schools or, or otherwise, which I think is, makes it even more impressive. I often get asked the question, with all the growth and all the investment and all the money coming into our city, why aren't my taxes going down?
And Mr. Memma might want to jump in on this, but part of the answer is, growth results in a reduction in the, in the, in the level of taxation that it would otherwise be required. So on a typical year with the amount of growth, it offsets about the equivalent of about one point five percent in, in, in new taxation. So I don't know if Mr. Memma has anything he wants to add to that, but it does have a, a positive impact for sure.
Thank you.
Through you. Mr. Lindsay is actually correct. We actually receive a significant amount of new taxes from growth, but we also need to know that with growth comes additional costs. Thank you.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Always very interesting information and, and on the whole, very positive. I have a couple of related questions regarding one of your earlier slides, construction value by permit type. And when I look at that, I'm not surprised at the, at the steady growth in residential construction, but I'm a little surprised over the last three years that there's been a fairly significant decline in commercial. And I don't know if there's anything that you can comment on with regards to that. But before you do, my, my second question, which I might be related, is I think recently we've experienced a number of projects, projects which are considered mixed use. And I'm wondering how those are tabulated into your statistics or whether in fact we, we need a new category.
Thank you, worship. Good, good question. We actually separate out the construction values on mixed-use projects, so we would allocate the residential to the residential portion. In terms of the commercial, what, what I would note is, often the, the commercial projects we see are very, are fairly large scale. So the, the difference between a year where we go up or a year where we go down can often be one project. So unlike residential, which is the composition of literally hundreds of projects and, you know, eight hundred building permits, maybe, it's, it's one or two projects that were maybe, didn't come in in the fourth quarter of 2017 that we will probably see in the first quarter of 2018, which can, can make twi, quite a difference. I think if you, if you stood back and looked maybe on a longer timeline, you'd see probably that, this line rather than looking like it goes down, it's probably generally consistent with what we've seen in terms of, of the overall composition of commercial investment.
All right. Thank you. That makes sense.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. First one is perhaps for yourself or perhaps for Mr. Memma, and that is with respect to vacation properties or what are considered to be non-resident properties. We're seeing that over the last twenty-four or forty-eight hours, significant exposes done in the media about how properties that are, that are owned by those who don't live in British Columbia will be taxed. And am I correct, at two percent per year based on value?
You're correct, worship. That's also, we understand, yes.
Okay. So do we, have we analyzed any of that information to see what, to see what effect it might have on the community? I know that, I know that while there are a number of, you know, there's a large number, for, for example, on Protection Island, that are, that are owner-occupied, there's also a very large number that are owned by those outside of, at least outside of B.C. and some outside the country. I'm just wondering whether or not we're going to see a lot of those properties go up for sale.
Your worship, I think it's early days. I think the intention of, of that step that the province took amongst other steps was to, to really try to cool the housing market. We'll see what the impact is here in Nanaimo, but I think at this point, it would be too early for me to give you a, a kind of comment on where I think it's going to go.
Okay, thank you. So the next question I've got is, is with respect to development and, and benefit. And yes, we see every year, new development coming in where, where we're going to see increase in taxation that will affect us, we're about that one and a half percent mark. However, would, could we not agree that the most effective, the most effective development is that, that which doesn't create significant additional liabilities? So for example, on that one slide where you said, you know, I don't know how many, a couple hundred new streetlights in the last three years, you know, ten or twelve or fourteen kilometers of new road, all the sidewalks, you know, curbs, gutters, sewers, and so on and so forth. Can we not agree that, that the most effective development is infill development, where it can be used on existing properties that are already serviced?
Absolutely, your worship. I think, I think, you know, the preferred stat up there would have zero new streetlights, but still have the same number, same amount of new development applications. And that would get to your point of not only investment, but investing in the right places. I think what, what's exciting for us is when we not only look at the projects, but also the types of projects that we're now seeing. And again, I would refer you back to looking at like things like multifamily in and around the Wood Grove, know things we've never seen before. We're really moving towards that goal of having our development in places where we have capacity in existing services, where we reduce the impact on our existing infrastructure. And therefore, we're able to, to best leverage the impact of development versus the benefit we get from that taxation.
Thank you. And I guess one that just comes to mind, of course, is again, core zoning. You know, we've seen that work in sort of fits and starts in both our community but in other communities around. And there, there seems to be winning formulas. The one that was up on, that was up by Mark's Work Warehouse that you suggested is going to be residential, which should be unusual for there. That seems to be the type of development that we're seeing that have that mix of commercial and residential and seem to be succeeding. I know that around the retail area in Maple Ridge, for example, there's housing been developed around it. And these core-style zoned units with, with coffee shops and yoga studios and, and so on and so forth, down on the lower floor, those types of amenities are, are doing very, very well. Do we see more interest in that in our community?
Your worship, I would say, you know, at this point, we, we do have a few mixed-use projects. And I, you know, the, the project that we talked about in the downtown core on the old City Hall Annex is, is a mixed-use project. So certainly that's encouraging. Even where we don't have mix of uses on the specific property, just the introduction of having multifamily in places like the project on Metro Drive or on, on the property behind Michael's, it allows us to introduce housing into an area that's never had it before. So although there might not be commercial right on that property or right under that building, it's in very close proximity to services on those properties.
Thank you. I see Counselor Hong has a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay, for the presentation. It's always good to, to see these numbers continue to grow. One question I have is, do you take into account what's happening at VIU, their buildings and, and stuff like that? Because that doesn't seem to be discussed in going forward with what the NDP has announced, I think allowing university cities now to take on debt to build housing. So do we get tax money on those facilities if they build it, or how's that going to work?
Your, your worship, that's a good point. Because certainly, even in this past year, you've seen significant development up at VIU with at least two or three new major additions to their campus. So it's great to see. But no, their, their developments are not included. We do not take building permits. We do not collect DCCs for, for the university. So they're not reflected in, in these numbers.
So what happens if they're going to start building student housing?
Even the student housing that's been built up there in more recent years, same thing. It's not subject to our building permits or our development permits. And I don't believe they're subject to ta, to taxes either.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Lindsay.
I was late, sorry.
Your Counselor Kip.
Just that interesting on my last point with VIU not applying for building permits, do they not give us a plan of what they're doing now?
They, they certainly are, are good at inviting us to participate in their campus planning processes and from staff to staff, keep us updated on their, on their projects and invite us to, to share information. But they do not, they do not provide us actual applications, no.
It's a funny one to me when I sit and hear our healthcare talk about how our zoning is slowing down a crisis, yet the education center doesn't even apply for permits. So why doesn't the Bank Runway Health Authority just set up the clinic? Just get her down, skip us, keep us out of it. It's contradictory to me where the university doesn't have to apply for permits, but then all of a sudden, we're hung up on zoning on safe injection. It's just so convoluted to me. Thank you, Dale. That was a phenomenal report. And it's interesting since 2014 how these, this just started to climb. It's the development and things are just starting to climb. Appreciate, appreciate the work and the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. So we'll move on to public services. And the first item is 2018 Strategic Directions for the Community Vitality Committee. It's to be introduced by Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you, your worship. As per your committee requirements, we come back to you at the start of each year with basically a work plan for the committee. This is the plan for the Community Vitality Committee for your consideration.
Thank you. So there is a recommendation, and it's been moved by Counselor Kip and seconded by Counselor Hong. Discussion. Seeing none, call the question. All who's in favor. Opposed, motion carries. The next one is under item twelve, other business. And the first one is the Community Engagement Task Force, to be introduced by Ms. Sheila Snellroth.
Sheila Snellroth?
Sheila, Sky, pardon me, I'm sorry.
Genetic merge?
On behalf of Sheila, she wasn't able to attend tonight. So at the council meeting February nineteenth, council directed staff to work with the Community Engagement Task Force to come up with options regarding timeframes for future engagement sessions, a key date calendar, a budget for three sessions, and report back to council at the meeting this evening. So I have a presentation to show. And at the end of the presentation, I'd like to invite Aaron Hemmings and Bill Manners, spokesperson for the Community Engagement Task Force, to the podium in order to answer any of council's questions. So based on council's direction, staff met with the Community Engagement Task Force members on Thursday, February twenty-second to discuss council's motion. Discussion took place regarding the respective roles of the task force, staff, and council. So the task force's role, the task force is, is tasked by council to implement council's motion and continue with the planning and implementing of the engagement sessions. Council's role, council is to participate in the engagement sessions and receive the feedback from the task force after each session. And staff is to support the task force by setting up monthly meetings, preparing minutes, and providing all other administrative support, including booking the engagement sessions. And the task force would like to sit down with council two weeks prior to any engagement session to ensure everyone is on the same So topics. If council wishes to provide topics for each of the sessions, they should be submitted well in advance in order to allow time for preparation, and with the understanding that topics will be embedded in an open program format in order to remain within the current mandate of open topic discussion. The task force will determine the format of each session on a case-by-case basis. Depending on availability of venues, it is anticipated that the second session will be held during the week of April twenty-third and the third session the week of July twenty-third. The fourth and final session will be held after the 2018 local election, which is in October. Depending on availability and suitability, venues will be distributed throughout the city with one session held in the North End and one in the South End. Potential locations include Oliver Woods Community Center and John Barsby Secondary School. We are requesting up to twenty thousand dollars for the remaining three sessions. And we have a recommended motion as well for council's consideration. And now I'd invite Aaron and Bill to come up to the podium to answer any questions.
Good evening.
Good evening again. Welcome back.
Welcome back. Did you have anything?
Well, I was just going to say, we worked very well with the team on Thursday. And what you find, I think, is a culmination of a good conversation that we had on Thursday. And I think the committee and staff are ready to move on if council wishes to.
Thank you. So is someone prepared to move the recommendations? Moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. Discussion. Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Where would that $20,000 come from? Because I know that we have probably some topics that we should be discussing, like marijuana. I know that we have probably money in some of these. Is this $20,000 directly coming out of a fund now, or is it going to come out of other areas?
Through, Your Worship, it's going to come through from other areas based on work that's already in place. And so we'll update council through the Finance and Audit Committee, the funding sources as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's been three delegations removed, A, B, and C. The fourth delegation is Mr. Marty Roberts and Hillary Harlow. And they wish to speak regarding a derelict building at 1400 Windgrove Street and are requesting council order the property owner to clean up, remove hazards, and secure the property.
Hello.
Good evening.
Sorry.
We need your names to address this space.
Hillary Harlow.
Into the microphone. Into the tall one.
That one's for me. Hillary Harlow at 2745 Departure Bay. I'm also bringing forth a petition that we've done. 133 people have signed it. We have pictures as well. I brought in 10 for each council and an extra one or so. I wouldn't mind if that could be passed about. Do I hand that forward? So I'll get Marty to say a little bit more here.
I think I'm in a conflict of interest. Is this the Amricos building?
It is.
I'm in a conflict of interest. I did the original designs for the building.
Okay.
And since they've had a fire, there's been some concern. So I'm stepping on it. Mr. Hamlin will be called back in.
Your Worship, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. My name is Marty Robertson. I'm 2745 Departure Bay Road. Departure Bay is known as the Gem of Nanaimo. We Amricos is right now, it's no gem. Thank you very much for the work upon cleaning it up last week. That was a start. The police has been called several times and they're sick and tired of it, they tell me. There's holes in the walls where people can crawl up and break in on the top and they get in and they do drugs and whatever else they want in there. Some people were squatting in there. The gentleman that owns it says that he loves Departure Bay. Well, he's living over on the mainland, paying very little taxes on that, while his property is going up, everybody else is going down. It's not that long since there was some gentleman here came in from Nickel Street. And they wouldn't give him any more time. They said it was too long, they had to tear down his building. His two had went on fire. Well, I'm afraid this is four and a half years going on now. And it's just no respect for no neighbors or anything else. A lot of the people, the 133, were just people passing by. And they say how disgusting it is. He says he's putting proposals to do buildings in there, but if he doesn't have the parking, he can propose what he likes. It's never going to get built. The parking isn't there. When I talked to the parking people here in the City Hall, they told me the only way that they could do that was tear down our community center and the green space across. Yet he was back in proposing the same thing again. When the other gentleman came in off of Nickel Street, I had to check the channel changer that night to see if I was looking at city council or homes and homes. Everybody was shouting, tear it down. I wish they had bring homes in now and tear this one down.
We watched dumpster after dumpster go out on Thursday while the city workers stood over them. There was at least four workers working there. And this is some of the garbage we've had to look at for over four years now. I'm beginning to not believe anything. All the holes in the walls is where kids can climb up. We were all shocked at the degree of garbage that came out of that. I really, at this point, don't believe anything that is being put forth when it comes to proposals anymore. The lot next door is charged more taxes than Amricos. So there's really very little incentive that I can see for them to move forward. It's being assessed at next to nothing. So we work very hard at keeping our property up and have spent a lot of money making it as such. But when you look at what we're up against, it's pretty horrendous. That's from our deck, those pictures are.
For most of us, wherever we come and we go, we hope to leave the place better than what we came into. And usually done a wonderful job with the walkway and everything around there. The parking is even less, unfortunately, after that. But then, how long does this go on for? Do we have to stay looking at this for another 10-year while he sits over on the mainland, looking at his investment going up while the rest of it look at ours going down? Thank you.
Thank you. I wonder if we can, can we get Mr. Lindsay in here? Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your concerns. Have you reported your concerns to bylaws? Is that why these have been getting fixed up?
Yes. Over a year ago, we come, the graffiti was on the wall and they didn't seem to get anything done about it. And we went back to them. This year, we asked them, what's going on? Why aren't we getting something done about this? And the gentleman turned around and said to me, if you want something done, you're going to have to go higher than me. And I'm higher now.
And just so you know, Counselor Hong has proposed a bylaw for derelict buildings, whatever, and I believe it's almost finished for us for final approval. So that will give us some teeth to do something.
We're very hopeful. Thank you.
When I phoned Victoria, they said they have no intentions of raising the taxes until some kind of a building permit is put in. So it's, there isn't really the incentive for an owner to do too much, as I can see.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for under the new bylaw that has been proposed. Like I said, Counselor Hong put that out, I guess, about two, three months ago. Yeah, so we're just waiting for the final drought.
We're very hopeful on that then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go any. Counselor Thorpe.
Through you to staff and, you know, to the delegations, it's amazing that you've had to put up with what you had to put up with. I mean, you know, even in the downtown, when we have empty buildings, they are at least secured so no one can access them. Through Mayor to Mr. Lindsay, I guess. I'm reading a story from the Nanaimo Bulletin, September 29, 2017, that says a development permit application has been resubmitted to council for that. And I'm just curious if that's true.
Your Worship, that is true. So there's an active development application that's been made for the subject property. It's for to add an additional floor to the building. Ultimately, the idea would be to have a mixed use project, the residential, commercial on the ground floor.
Follow up to that with regards to my comments. When can we expect the building to be secured so no one can access? I mean, it's a huge, I don't know whether it's a liability issue to the city, but it's certainly a liability issue to the owners if someone were to go in there, injure themselves, die in a fire because they're trying to keep warm. Any other number of things might happen. And I'm sure someone would be liable, whether it's the city or the owner. And I think it would behoove us to make it secure until it's taken down. Thanks.
Dumpster after dumpster that the city took out on Thursday, though, which helped those climb up above just some of those cutouts. And I remember watching in the summer, I thought, well, how are they going to get in? Well, when they got up to that deck above, they just opened the door that wasn't even locked and walked in.
It's locked now, where they can get in through the windows still. But again, if he's going to propose to do something that there is no parking for, this is just another delay tactic as far as we're concerned.
Thank you. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Thank you for presenting. And it's very disappointing. I was just going to ask if there's a way, and I totally concur with your presentation and compared to Nickel Street comparison you gave to that house, you must sit there and feel sick in the stomach. So the question I have more so, I guess, to be for staff, through your, Mr. Mayor to Mr. Lindsay, would be regardless who's applying for whatever, in the interim, like any other derelict site or dangerous site, fire hazard, I could probably go on and on with your list and totally concur, is could we order that to be demolished in the interim? Because it is an eyesore, it is hazardous, it's all the above.
Your Worship, I would suggest if that's something that council wants to pursue, I think you should probably ask for a report from council.
Okay.
Sorry, report from staff. You know, there is certainly the ability under the Local Government Act to do what's called a remedial action order. Those are generally done where we think there's a life safety issue with the building. And that, not that this building will possibly collapse on itself, but that it will cause harm to the general public. So we've done them in the past where there's been a building in the downtown where the roof collapsed and there was concern about the building would actually come out into the public road right of way. So we went for a remedial action order. Very, very rarely do we ever use that tool, except for in times of complete necessity. But if that's something you want to pursue, I would suggest the request for a report.
A way to after delegation, Your Worship? Thank you.
I have a question for the delegation. That is, these pictures that are taken from this vantage point, is that from your deck?
It is.
So you're the house immediately adjacent to the vacant lot?
Empty lot.
Okay. And do you consider that lot to be an eyesore as well?
We do, but we understand that they were trying to work on it and things was happening. And we spoke to the gentleman that owns it and he's talking about putting it up for sale now.
There's a mattress that I've looked at for over four years, and I think
That was thrown in.
That was one of the many that were from Amricos. In fact, the city removed many mattresses on Thursday from the side of the building, rotting carpeting, it went on and on and on. So it was just one of the, some of the debris was even from Amricos. It wasn't completely from the lot. But yeah, it continues.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just following up on your comments because I was assuming this was all one property. But is that the vacant lot is a separate property and a separate owner?
Yes.
And so is your concern with both of the pieces of property?
To be honest with you, we give everybody a chance to do whatever they could. We've been very patient with Mr. Amricos. The other gentleman that's there started to do something, and there was something about the archaeology there. And I know they got stopped a little bit, they brought in gravel and that. And I spoke to him last week about it again. And he said that he thinks that he's just going to sell it now.
Okay, thank you.
He is fed up with Amricos as well as we are, that it's just not working down there.
I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Yocum.
I'd like to, is a motion for a dissection for staff to do that, inquire about what Dale said? Dale had better language than I had.
What are you looking for?
My motion is what Dale said. Just kidding. And I'd like to make a motion for staff to do a report on the provincial regulations that you stated. I don't know if it was actual wording you stated, but in regards to the building.
Report to consider options for site remediation, including removal of the existing building?
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. All right, on the motion. Counselor Bestwick.
Thank you. I will support the motion, of course. I have much empathy for the folks that have to observe this and those that are surrounded. There's considerable amount of quality development that's going on down in that area. And this property absolutely needs to be remedied and has needed to be for many, many weeks. Mr. Lindsay, 30 minutes ago, you provided us with statistics that indicated that a development permit, which there's a development permit has been suggested in for this Amricos site. And 19.7 weeks is the average right now, or was in 2017. So we're well over the average of 19.7 weeks now that we're into where we are. I see this as a health issue. I see it as a nuisance property. I see it as a derelict property. I see it as an unsightly. I see it as expenditure to send bylaws down there, to send fire department people down there, to send RCMP people down there relentlessly. And while I'm in support of the motion to refer this back to staff to come forward with a report on options for how we might proceed, at the RDN, we had a similar situation. The Cassidy Inn, it might have been more derelict, if you will, because of the fire that occurred. But this building doesn't seem any less. And while we're waiting for the derelict property bylaw to come forward as well, we're hearing considerable amount of dialogue from our community, rightfully so, about the A and B Sound Building. It almost is at the point to me now, when will that report, the derelict bylaw, building bylaw, come forward? Will it come before this report? Might we set ourselves into the late spring or summer before something is in front of us to be able to move on? And so again, I'm okay with the fact that we're going to move forward with the report. But to me, there's enough evidence to suggest, because it's been in front of us previously and because of the derelict buildings and so on and so forth, is there not something that's more robust that we have available to us to, I'm sorry, to appeal to the owners? To say if this doesn't take place, this is what is likely, is what will likely take place? So you really wish to move on? And I think that if we can do something like that and set a precedent so that we can start removing the doubt from people in our community that nothing will get done. And I think that's as important as anything. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me, blah, blah.
Your Worship, I think what I would say is there's maybe two things there. And one is the bylaw that I understand that our bylaw staff have been working on, not a derelict building bylaw, but a vacant building bylaw. And it would apply to not necessarily buildings that are becoming derelict, but just buildings that have been standing vacant for long periods of time, regardless of the state of the building. But I think we could bring forward a report that dealt with, and you talked about the tool. The tool is actually the remedial action order. And that's the strongest tool that council has to deal with these situations. So I think we can keep them quite separate, the discussion about that remedial action order and the separate bylaw that you may or may not entertain for vacant buildings.
Mr. Lindsay, just to follow up, separating them fine, how soon or how swiftly might we be able to have the information in the reports that will provide us with the instruments, tools to take some formalized action against the properties? Vacant, derelict, or otherwise?
Yeah, so Your Worship, I can't speak with respect to the actual vacant building bylaw that's being dealt with outside my department. But in terms of a report specifically on the remedial action orders and the potential under this property and options available to council, it's something we could get back to you very quickly on. It's not dissimilar to the situation you had with the It's not dissimilar to the situation you had with a building in the downtown core here not too long ago that was ultimately demolished, but that sat for a year, and council at that time debated, debated about doing a remedial action order to have that building demolished until ultimately it was demolished by the property owner.
Thank you. So we do have the remedial action order available to us today?
The tool is absolutely available to you. There are steps and requirements that council must consider when you're entering into a remedial action order, so I wouldn't suggest that you issue one this evening. I think the best step would be to ask for a report, and we could get back to you in short order on that.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Hong.
Thank you, and I will support the recommendation. It's a pity that this prime piece of real estate hasn't developed faster than four and a half years. If I do recall, Counselor Fuller is right that they have a development permit for a two-story, but what ended up happening was, well, that came with applying for a three-story of design advisory without adding any parking. So it was very limited for parking. I think it was required some 60, and they offered 18 or something like that. So it was a number that was kind of astonishing on that retrospect. And I do see that, you know, we as a city are losing out on tax money, because I did the math on B.C. assessment on all these units, it kind of works out to roughly about $312,000 for that property. That's all we're collecting taxes on. So let's get these dealt with, because I think it's not helping the community, the neighbors, or us. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller.
Well, I'm going to support the recommendation, but as to my question earlier, which I don't believe was answered, how quickly can we have that building secured so there is no public access? Are we going to have to wait for the report, or can that be done almost immediately?
Your worship, I think quite separate from the report, staff will have discussions immediately with the property owner about improving security on that property.
Thanks. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. I'll certainly support the motion, but supplemental to that, I still have quite a concern about the other, the other piece of property, the one that's in the foreground, the empty lot, which to me is an unsightly premises. And these folks looking out from their balcony, looking at that view, it seems to me that the empty lot is just as much an eyesore as the vacant, derelict building. So although I certainly want something done about the building, I'd like something done about the empty lot as well, and I understand there have been efforts to clean it up, but if these pictures are still fairly recent, there is a lot more cleanup that needs to be done. So I would ask through you to Mr. Lindsay if there's some tools that staff could bring to bear on the other property owner to deal with this vacant lot. Can we declare it an unsightly premises? Is that the way to go?
Your worship, maybe I'll answer part of that, and then I'll ask, I'll ask the fire chief to jump in a little bit. But in terms of, my understanding is on the vacant property, we gave an order for remediation, and there was a significant amount of debris that was removed off the property within the last couple of weeks. I believe the city took the initiative on that, but the cost will be charged back to the property owner.
So through the chair, sorry, through the chair, yes, the property was cleaned up on last Thursday, so the pictures that you're seeing had all the debris. And through our bylaw services, I guess they had been in touch with the property owners, and they had run out of time and all of that. I believe there were four bins that were removed from the property. And further to Counselor Fuller's question, I'll answer that as well. Through the fire safety or the fire code, we will have that building secured, so nobody can access it within the next few days.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And what about the graffiti? While you're at it.
So the graffiti as well was required to be removed. They couldn't do it last week because of the weather, inclement weather, so that will be done as soon as it is dry enough that they can paint over.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I see no further questions. So there's been a motion that's been moved and seconded. Call the question, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Can't, there he is. We're getting down to 6:24 PM, so we do have another delegation, which is Heather Nicholas. However, I'd suggest.
It was up here, stating he shares a birth date with someone that committed a crime on that same birth date, when he's not that person, exactly that makes sense. So maybe we can make, look at some policy change around that, the reimbursement part, when he finds out the person is not X, Y, that person. So there's another thing which is sort of troubling is, a lot of people go through this when they're volunteering. I'm sure the gentleman's volunteering in a lot of cases, and just to throw your fingerprints around the RCMP is not a small, small thing. It's not small potatoes. And I don't think it's right for people volunteering just to be having their fingerprints on record anywhere. Not that he or people are going to do anything wrong, but it's just a violation that feels really intrusive. I get you got to do the process, but after we get reimbursed, I'd also hope the person's fingerprints are discarded or whatever they do, in fairness to the individual as well, when they're cleared or whatever it's called. And I totally concur because similar background as this gentleman, and yeah, and it hits as well, because I was in a similar situation as a delegate, and back in my day, we went through the courts and this and that, and the animal minor soccer, from the soccer coach that was a pedophile, was, people were complaining that criminal record checks had to come in place as well. So it's a delegate, delegate subject, and I believe your recommendation would be very doable for the individuals and such. And, but I'd also like to put discard the fingerprints as well, because why should he or she have them just on file, just because they're volunteering and they totally have no charges or anything, or criminal, being guilty of any crimes? Thank you.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. So then is it appropriate to request a report from, from staff on options for the city being able to reimburse for this charge? Is that the way to go here?
I would say that's absolutely appropriate, yes.
And is a motion in order to that effect? Then I would make such a motion that we request a report from staff on the options for the city being in a position to reimburse people for this expense.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Fuller. Any further discussion? Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. Of course, I would make the assumption that it will include the number of people that have been fingerprinted on an annual basis, the amounts that might be involved dollar-wise, the, I'm certainly hoping that a dollar factor isn't an impediment to people being fingerprinted, and if it is, then that is wrong also, if people aren't in a position to pay in any event, but, because more people need to be protected, in my humble opinion. So the motion as it reads is just to refer this back to staff to come back with a report, how we can pay for it. But I assume that it will include all the statistics that we would need so we know how many people over the years have been or have not, or I don't know how you know how, how many people have declined to get their fingerprints done because of the money, but, so I'll be supporting it. I hope it includes all of the information.
Thank you. Counselor, Mr. Mayor.
So that we're clear, the issue of fingerprinting is not a city process. That's it, that's an RCMP process. We come in from a bylaw on the fee side, where we collect, I think, $25 or something for that. In terms of stats, we can provide stats in terms of, you know, how much we've collected for the service, but we would not have details as to how many people are in the same predicament as the delegate who spoke to you. We'll see what kind of stats we can come back with, but I think the issue has to do with the refund in the, in the circumstance that he finds himself. And that's what we'll focus on. The issue of whether we should do away with fingerprinting, that's not a city process, that's an RCMP process. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
Thank you. I was just going to say for fingerprinting, if you didn't charge fingerprinting for criminal record checks, that would solve your problem.
One would suggest.
Because the only people that get fingerprinted are those, like he said, who share a birth date. Like, if I go in and nobody shares my birth date, I don't get fingerprinted. So the simple solution would just be, don't charge fingerprinting for criminal record checks. Then you would charge them for like, you know, employment or whatever, the separate ones, but just throw that out, because those are the only people that do get fingerprinted are those who, and having done the job for many years, you could, you could score a two out of 100, and you're still going to get fingerprinted even though you're a two. That's just because they err on the side of caution when it's a vulnerable sector checked. It's an automatic, and that's, that's not, that's mandated by law, provincial and federal law. It's not, nothing to do with us, so, like you said, the only thing that's to do with us is the, is the fee. I mean, you could eliminate the fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with Mr. Mayor and Counselor Armstrong that it's got nothing to do with us, and I know we do the child ID thing, and it's a voluntary thing, and you can go to a mall or wherever it's set up, and you can get children ID and all that great stuff. So if we can't make it free for those people, then maybe we could consider biannually, police would be there, they're going to be at, I don't know, Wood Grove Mall, you can get fingerprinted for free, and, but there has to be a better method than just those that happen to share a birth date with somebody that has been accused of some crime. So, and when I, so when I ask about the information, that's what I, that's what I'm meaning, there's got to be a better way. So, and it is a nuisance, and it's a pain in the neck, and then you have to wait 90 days or 120 days, or however long it takes, to get clearance, and in the meantime, you can't volunteer, and, so I know that, because I had to go through that, and it's a nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded. Call the question, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is a delegation from Leanne Morissette to present reasons why licensing and control of animals bylaws 1995, number 4923, section 9E, which forbids the keeping of pet rabbits on lots less than one acre in Nanaimo should be amended to allow pet rabbits on lots less than one acre. I just wanted to say to staff, thank you very much for including the bylaws in the, in the agenda. That's very, very helpful. Thank you. Ms. Morissette.
Good evening, Leanne Morissette, 770 Railway Avenue. Mayor McKay and members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here this evening on behalf of rabbit owners in the city of Nanaimo to request that you consider amending bylaw 1995, number 4923, section 9A, which prohibits the keeping of domestic rabbits on parcels of land less than one acre in size. A brief introduction, I'm originally from Montreal, lived in Vancouver for eight years before moving here to Nanaimo. I have a fine arts degree, and I've been running a world-renowned specialty microphone manufacturing business for the past 12 years. I've also been working as an educator and bird of prey trainer at the Raptor Centre in Duncan since 2015. You have all received emails from me and other concerned citizens on the issue, and I thank the seven council members who responded to me. It seems most of you are unaware of this bylaw, as I was, and so far, the majority of you who responded have expressed agreement that the bylaw should be amended. It is my goal this evening to deliver arguments that will hopefully convince the rest of you that this bylaw is hurting Nanaimo and not helping us. Myself and many others, as evidenced by the 136 signatures currently on our petition, consider this unfair bylaw to be causing more problems than it solves. We are currently the only municipality on all of Vancouver Island or the major Gulf Islands to prohibit the keeping of the world's third most popular domestic pet after dogs and cats. The city already allows the keeping of ducks, chickens, and bees on lots much smaller than one acre. In fact, this is one of the key factors in my decision to buy a home here. Why are we not permitted to keep rabbits? Rabbits are quiet, clean, easily kept in smaller spaces, both indoors and outdoors, and provide excellent fertilizers for our gardens. They are basically the only option for an urban homesteader with limited space to produce their own sustainable meat. They are easy to care for and make great starter animals for children participating in 4H programs. Rabbits raised for meat are easily and humanely processed by government-inspected local facilities like Pleccus Meats for a reasonable fee of $8 per rabbit. Vancouver Island plays host to multiple internationally recognized rabbit shows each year, and Victoria is the home of one of North America's oldest rabbit breeding associations begun in 1918. There's no denying that Vancouver Island loves its rabbits. A visit to the Rabbit Barn at our yearly exhibition at Beben Park, teeming with smiling kids and healthy rabbits of all varieties, should be enough to convince anyone. I am an avid gardener, but when I bought my home here in 2012, the soil was poor and did not provide very good returns. The addition of rabbits to my property changed all that, and now my gardens are the envy of all my neighbors. I produce more than enough organic greens, herbs, and vegetables to keep my family fed all year round. I have never used my green compost container, as all my kitchen and garden waste is consumed by my rabbits and chickens and converted into manure. The chicken manure needs to be composted for at least a year, but the rabbit manure can be used immediately and is considered one of the best available. My rabbits are instrumental, as they happily eat invasive plants such as Himalayan blackberry, bindweed, and scotch broom, all things that I'm constantly battling to keep at bay on my property. What would I do with these plant clippings without them? I couldn't compost them as they would simply spread. I would be sending them to the landfill. I have spent many long hours working at the Cedar landfill as a bird abatement officer. I am therefore acutely aware of my trash output, and I do not want to contribute to the dumping of anything that I do not absolutely have to. I have been keeping rabbits on my property since I moved here from Vancouver. In that time, I have received zero complaints until now, and I have the full support in writing of all seven of my adjacent neighbors. I frequently have neighborhood children over to my property to enjoy my rabbits, chickens, and bees, and learn about their proper care and husbandry. My rabbits are securely contained at all times and have never escaped. I am fully aware of our feral rabbit situation and have no desire to contribute to it. It is my belief that the vast majority of rabbit owners in Nanaimo feel the same way. The only argument I've heard from the city so far defending the current bylaw is that we have a feral rabbit problem. Some seem to think that it is caused in some significant way by rabbit dumping. Although I'm sure rabbits are occasionally abandoned in Nanaimo, I would like to ask you to consider the following. Australia also has a feral rabbit problem. It began like this. In 1859, a man named Thomas Austin released 24 feral rabbits on his property near Victoria. By 1886, less than 30 years later, this small population had exploded to cover all of Victoria and New South Wales. By 1900, the rabbits had reached the Northern Territory and Western Australia. Rabbits breed like rabbits. The cause of our feral rabbit population is our feral rabbit population. How much does a modest home on an acre of land cost in Nanaimo? Right now, it's easily approaching a million dollars. Are we happy to project the classist message that only millionaires are considered responsible enough to keep pets? We already have a bylaw against animal dumping, which carries a modest fine. The simple fact is that the kind of person who would abandon a household pet will not be deterred by any law against it. This is a person lacking empathy and basic human morals. These people will always exist, but good citizens should not be punished for the actions of a cruel few. The feral rabbit population here will never be solved unless the city makes a concerted effort to cull or sterilize. We have a feral cat problem. Why are pet cats not illegal? We have a trash dumping problem. Why is trash not illegal? The absurdity of these statements is obvious. Anti-Bullying Day in Canada and the U.S. is two days from now, on February 28th. How can we say we are against bullying when this bylaw is turning our animal control officers into government-sponsored bullies? How many children in Nanaimo have rabbits as pets? Perhaps hundreds? This bylaw allows the anonymous complaint of anyone, anywhere, without a single warranted argument or reason, to cause these beloved pets to be taken away. Is this a position we want our animal control officers to be in? Is this what we want city time and resources used for? I know I want my city's animal control department out there protecting abused and neglected animals and making sure pets are being kept in a responsible and neighborly way. I do not want them being used as a tool for harassment, and I absolutely believe they do not want that either. Pet owners love their pets and derive great enjoyment and stress relief from their company and daily care. This bylaw is not going to stop us from keeping our pets. It just serves to turn us all into criminals, worrying that any moment, an officer may knock on our doors and turn our lives upside down. In some cases, it will cause good contribution. In some cases, it will cause good contributing members of our community to move elsewhere, to cities with more reasonable rules and regulations. How will responsible rabbit ownership ever be taught to our children if rabbits are outlawed? Children living in urban areas should not be denied this opportunity simply because of their parents' social class. I live in Herwood, which is actually the very first planned agricultural community in all of British Columbia. In 1884, it was divided up into five-acre parcels, so the miners could farm their land and take care of their families. I want to take care of my family in the same way, by producing eggs, honey, and by gardening, all without chemicals. Raising rabbits responsibly is part of that goal. Nanaimo was a pioneer in sustainability and home food production over 100 years ago. Let's continue to foster those ideals now. I hope I have made some salient points tonight. I would like to further mention that bylaw 1995 number 4923, as it stands, contains quite a few inconsistencies that we and our lawyer believe make much of it unenforceable. Many of the schedules and sections do not line up properly, and in its current state, it is confusing. It has been in this state since 2015, which would make many seizures and fines that have occurred since that time unlawful. Since it appears that changes will have to be made anyway, in order to set things straight, why not also amend the outdated rabbit bylaw at the same time? So far, the city has informed us that they will not currently be enforcing our ticket because of the bylaw errors. We would like to ask the city that we be allowed to keep our rabbits until a final decision is made regarding the bylaw, in order to minimize their potential stress. I remind you again that we have signed letters from all our neighbors in support of us keeping them, which I would be happy to provide you upon request. Thank you all so much for your time and attention to this issue. I look forward to working with the city in any way I can to help make these changes happen, and I'm happy to address any questions or concerns you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegation, counsel? Counselor Beswick.
Leanne, thank you very much for your continued pursuit for changes to this bylaw. I had no idea that this bylaw existed, and only one of, as you've indicated in your report, 51 municipalities on Vancouver Island. So you asked if we could sort of suspend our bylaw, or something, you didn't say suspend, so that you could proceed to have your rabbits until such time as the bylaw is amended to your...
Or at least until a decision is made, one way or the other.
Which to me seems extremely reasonable. So I'll wait till see what other councillors have to say, and then proceed when you leave the podium.
Counselor Armstrong.
I just wondered, how many rabbits do you have?
Currently, I have six. Thanks.
Thank you. I see no further questions for you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if you're wishing to have, is this arising from delegations at the conclusion, or if you would like to deal with these one at a time?
No, let's do it now.
Thank you. Then, without crafting a motion, certainly, I would recommend that council direct staff to return to council with options as it relates to the domestic rabbit bylaw, and in the interim, refrain from any action as it relates, something to that effect. I hope the inferences are reasonable enough that we can create a bylaw to reflect that.
Counselor Fuller. Yeah, I totally support something to that effect. So I'll second it. Oh, okay. I'm thinking as I'm talking. So yeah, I'll definitely second it, and if I can speak to it. We allow six chickens. We allow people to have cats and dogs, and I don't think there's any limit on how many you can have. Recently, we've talked about banning the sale of puppies and kittens, and an outright ban on the sale of rabbits. And as I've stated before, I think when we do that, we're taking it too far, because people will find the means to get the pets they want. If they can't get them in Nanaimo, they'll get them off Craigslist, or they'll go to Lansville, or they'll go to Parksville to get their rabbit or their puppy. One thing that we could do in all of these cases is to make sure the sale of any of them would require spaying and neutering. And that way, you wouldn't have the feral rabbit population you do now, because the rabbits and pets that would be let loose in the community wouldn't be able to breed. I don't have a problem with six rabbits, and what if a person is raising those rabbits for show, much like they do at the 4H club, et cetera? Are we going to fine people for that? I also hazard a guess, we don't issue too many fines, because that seems to be, we rely on people to honor the bylaws, et cetera, and when there are complaints, they come out and they talk to you, try and work it out. And I'm curious as to how many fines have ever been issued on the rabbits, or the puppies, et cetera, et cetera. If we're going to have fines, I think we have to enforce them, you know? I do. But I think some of the stuff really needs to be revisited, and, you know, put a limit on how many rabbits you can have, like we have on chickens and ducks and whatever. And rabbit is quite good eating, if you want it to.
That's it? Thank you. Mr. Memma.
Thank you, worship. I think we are running into a legal process issue. You have a bylaw, you can't override your bylaw by a simple motion. And so, you can amend a bylaw by going through the bylaw process. So what we'll probably propose to do is we could put this one in the first track to see what amendments to the bylaw could be made, and bring that back as quickly as we can. In the meantime, I think we'll work with the delegate, and she's done some research, actually, which I think is pretty useful for that process. So I would recommend that you do nothing, just direct staff to go work with the resident and come back. You can give us a time limit, so that we just don't go away and don't come back, but we intend to make sure this is responded to in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. So you're suggesting that at this point, we defeat the motion that's on the floor?
Or you could withdraw the motion with the permission of the mover and seconder.
Okay, thank you. As the mover and seconder are prepared to withdraw the motion. Counselor Beswick.
Oh, boy, I don't want to belabor this, but yes and no. If this is a legal scenario that we may find ourselves in, I mean, then I'd be quite comfortable to direct staff to return to council with a bylaw amendment, as it relates to domestic rabbits on less than one acre. If you need something that's more specific than generic in order to deal with this, and really, domestic rabbits aren't the problem, it's undomesticated owners that are. So if we need to change the bylaw to allow rabbits up to six, or whatever the number is, on a size of property in the city limits under an acre, well, then let's change the bylaw, and save you the time going back and doing reports and all the rest. So can I make a motion to amend the bylaw to allow domestic rabbits on properties within the city of Nanaimo on less than an acre? Can I do that right now?
I'll defer to the deputy city clerk, but my, I think the cleanest way of dealing with this, staff's position is to actually facilitate the bylaw change. But we want to facilitate that by bringing to you information that you can base your decision on. She's already done good research. We have some stats here in terms of enforcement that we also want to bring together, and so if you allow us to come back in a timely fashion, you will achieve the same process that...
So one thing I'm trying to avoid is a legal opinion on rabbits on property underneath an acre in the city of Nanaimo.
That's not what we are proposing to do. Thank you.
Mr. Woodgrove.
Thank you. So I'd recommend that council withdraw the motion on the floor, and then make a new motion to direct staff to return to council at a council meeting with a bylaw amendment.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so Counselor Beswick.
I'm happy to direct staff to return with a bylaw amendment to the domestic rabbit bylaw, number whatever it is, as it relates to rabbits on properties less than one acre, or to that effect. You will craft that, Sky, I'm sure, properly for me. Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, discussion. So I want to caution council, we've got a, I can't support the motion as it stands right now. We have absolutely no information, other than a delegation, a very intelligent and articulate delegation, came forward and suggested that we've got some significant problems with our bylaw, because a bylaw officer told her that. Some bylaw officer told the delegation that there's all kinds of problems with this bylaw, and it would never stand a challenge. Sorry, I think we need a lot more information than that. We need our legal people to tell us whether or not this bylaw needs review. There's, what we were given here was the 1995, pardon me, the 2017 consolidated version. So that tells me there's been a lot of changes made to that bylaw since 1995. I don't know what the rationale was when this particular item was amended. I know that we've got, we're not allowed to sell rabbits in Nanaimo, at least through pet stores, it's against the law. There was a reason for that. I'd kind of like to have some history on why that came about, but I can't support, you know, I've been following council, I've been on council for six and a half years, and followed it for three and a half years before that, so for 10 years. This is the first time anyone's ever brought it up. So because a single delegation came forward and wants changes made, we're about to do that? I need a lot more history than that. Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
I will support the motion, because I think it's, we're making criminals, so to speak, out of people that even have one rabbit. I think the motion, the way I heard it, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that we're directing staff to bring back a report with the availability of having up to maybe six rabbits, and I think that, to me, makes sense. So I will support that motion to, for the report to come back.
I don't think you're correct on that. Can the clerk read the motion, please?
That council direct staff to return to council with a bylaw amendment regarding the restrictions about the number of rabbits on properties within the city of Nanaimo.
That's part of a report.
No, not a report, a bylaw amendment is what she's, is what the bylaw, what the motion's asking for, to allow it. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. If you want a friendly amendment to give consideration to, that's fine, as opposed to just bring it back changed. But when we speak to things not happening previously, all of our bylaws are complaint-driven. So somebody's complained, a bylaw officer, I'm suspecting, just didn't go and knock on this family's door, because they heard there was rabbits in the house, or protected in a pen, or in the backyard. So somebody's complained. So the reason we haven't heard anything about this is because nobody's complained before. So now, there's a complaint, and the bylaw officer had to do their job to enforce our bylaw. And I'm going to guess that nobody at this table knew that we had a bylaw that said you can't have a rabbit in your house, or in your backyard. So now what happens? Well, the person comes and says, hey, I really think that this is a bylaw that you guys should amend. You're the only city on Vancouver Island that has one. That speaks volumes to me, and unless somebody is told that your chickens, or your rabbits, or where you park your car, or whatever, is a disturbance to your neighbor, or whoever that complained, you don't say anything about it. So this mother woman has come to us and said, hey, fix your bylaw. Doesn't make sense. I agree with her. So the sooner that we can deal with this, the better, in my opinion, and this won't be the first time that we have something that's come to us that we haven't heard about for 10 years, and I'm sure there'll be something else in a week or a month. But I, you can change the wording of the motion if you want, but at the end of the day, there's no amount of information that I'm going to receive that's going to change my mind. Thank you.
Mr. Memma.
Thank you, worship. Staff's position is not that we're going to respond because somebody said it's not going to stand a challenge. Part of our responsibility to council is to make sure that the bylaws are viable, and as part of the review, and part of the information, and part of the internal stats that we have, we'll bring this together in a package. At that point, you would have decision points to make based on the information that we'll bring in front of you. But we're not just going away to amend the bylaw for the sake of amending it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hall.
Thank you. I'm assuming that we're probably on page 37 of the bylaw, number 9A, that says, no person shall keep or harbor any livestock, poultry, or rabbit on any parcel of land unless the said parcel has an area of not less than one acre. I guess that's where she is probably referring to. And then right below that, we had amended bylaw that allowed chickens. So if you actually look at that bylaw, chickens, poultry is mentioned on there. So for us to amend it to include rabbits on number C, I think it's easy to do, because we've done it with poultry, and I understand. So and I guess that 9A is to see, overcovering bylaw, and 9C allows people to have chickens. So I'm assuming that we can probably just add 9D, that would say the same thing with regards to rabbits, or strike out 9A altogether. Either way, I will support the motion. Thank you.
Counselor Fuller.
Well, this is the first time I've found out that we actually allow 50 pigeons, 50 racing pigeons. That's kind of cool. Maybe we should amend the bylaw to have racing rabbits. No, I'm just kidding. I believe my, I believe my question was answered in that Mr. Memma mentioned that with the bylaw amendment would come a report on it, so, thank you.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Not to prolong this, I still feel I need a little bit of clarification, and if I heard what Mr. Memma said, I'm happy to support the motion, because to me, that sounded like staff is coming back with a report with options of possible changes or amendments to this bylaw. And I'm very happy to look at those, I have sympathy with the delegation, but I would not be prepared to support a motion that just said, come back with a new bylaw. I don't want to rush into things, even though they seem obvious, I prefer myself to have more information to look at before I make that final decision. So I'm hearing sort of two things. I'm hearing that the motion calls for staff to come back with an amended bylaw, and if that's the case, I can't support it. I'm hearing from Mr. Memma that the intent of the motion is for staff to come back with information to guide us towards amending a bylaw. I'd be happy to support that. So perhaps a city clerk, or Mr. Memma, or the mover, or somebody can help me.
So when we bring a bylaw amendment to council, it will have a supporting report that explains the changes? Yeah?
Thank you very much. Counselor Kip.
Well, thank you. I think all animals need to be protected, and our bylaw doesn't do that very well. It protects dogs, but it doesn't have stuff about cats and things. We allow boa constrictors, and snakes, and a bearded dragon bite you, there can be some pretty toxic crap in that. So for me, the bylaw, I think, was originally struck in 1995. I just happened to be on council way back then, too. I just happened to be on council way back then too. And, um, it's a different time now. Um, I think rabbits, I've had a rabbit. My daughter really got mad at me when she realized my rabbit's name was Stuart. I called him Stu for short. Um, and she got mad at me, but rabbits have been part of families. That was his name. I called him Stu for short. My daughter punched me. She was about sixteen when she realized. But it's an important thing. It's part, if we're starting to be green and look at food on the island and food security, a garden, it's phenomenal what rabbits can do. And stupid people are going to let their rabbits go or think it's okay or be, or just tell their kids it disappeared because they're too lazy to take care of it. And that's more of an educational thing for us. But our bylaw, I think, is, is dated. It needs some updates. It needs some, you know, different, different things in it. So I think it needs an overhaul. I don't think it has had many since nineteen ninety-five from my view. So I support the motion on the floor and believe in allowing it. And of course, with both of it, more, more information is better, right? Um, and I know we do have some problem with licensing and with enforcement of these laws is a tough thing. And I just want them also to be enforced equally and equitably across our community, no matter what laws we have. And I think our bylaw department usually tries to, I'll say they try to deal with it on a, getting, convincing people to work with them. And sometimes they come down with a heavy hammer and I think that's okay too. But I believe people should be allowed to have some rabbits on their property. They can have llamas and in the country, but rabbits and small animals, I think, are okay to have in our community. So I support the motion on the floor and I'd like to see a review of the bylaw. And comparing it, making it standard across Vancouver Island would be really good to me. Everything is different. Every building, every bylaw, every code, you design three different chicken coops in three different communities now and you're going to get three different bylaws and that's crazy. So I'd like to amalgamate our bylaws with the rest of the island. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I would suggest that this is not unlike, uh, bylaws are not unlike collective agreements. You know, for every, each, each action, there's an equal opposite reaction somewhere else. And sometimes, and sometimes, sometimes they're way off somewhere where you don't expect them to be. Uh, I think Counselor Hong brings good, forward a good point that, uh, that it looks as though the, the, the bylaw has been modified over the years and it's inconsistent from one clause to the next. So as part of this process, can we please have a legal look at this to determine if there are those kinds of, sorts of inconsistencies that make the bylaw more confusing than it needs to be?
Uh, as a standard process, because this is your quasi judicial processes, your bylaws are always reviewed by legal. So we'll do the same.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So the next delegation is Mr. Steve Johnson, uh, to address counsel regarding safety concerns with Boxwood Road and Vibe Dance Studios located at one nine six nine Boxwood Road.
Good evening, your worship, council and staff. My name's Steve Johnson. I live at two zero one two Cathers Drive. I actually brought the owner of Vibe Dance Studios, Sarah Stewart. She's a little shy.
I don't think so.
Not on the dance floor anyways.
Or at the stage at the Port Theater.
That's right. Um, the reason why I, um, I'm here on behalf of Vibe Dance Studio, my daughter dances at Vibe. Um, she does eight dances a week and I understand that a lot of you have your, either your kids or your grandkids that dance at Vibe Studio. Just to give you an idea, there's five hundred students, uh, at Vibe Dance Studio. Uh, ages from five till twenty years old, I guess. Yeah. Some of the concerns that have been going on, um, at Vibe, it's at nineteen sixty-nine Boxwood Road. There's a, a steady stream of increasing traffic as Mr. Lindsay pointed out. There's two new commercial spaces, uh, that are just getting finished up. Uh, on Boxwood, there's an extension of the road that's going from the, uh, the roundabout. That will be through traffic to East Wellington as well. Three weeks ago, um, I kind of lost my stuff. Um, and I, uh, because I almost saw a five-year-old get hit, uh, on Boxwood. It was about eight thirty at night. And I've seen this over and over and over again, and I know that a lot of parents have seen this over and over and over again. It's a dark area. Um, it used to be quiet. Uh, Sarah started this twelve years ago and she explained it was, uh, there was a gravel road back then and she was at the very end. Now it's anything but. And the problem with it is, uh, in, in my business, um, in construction, there's a lot of the heavy construction, uh, trucks that are going through there and they're whizzing, uh, by there. We actually had in the last five years, uh, engineering, engineering department from the city in Anima that was out there. They had the, um, uh, measuring the, uh, traffic count and as well measuring the speed. And I think the average speed was sixty kilometers an hour. It's posted at fifty. So that's a twenty percent over, um, for speed, uh, going through there. Add in that you have, uh, dark streets, kids that are darting in, darting out. I'm surprised that there hasn't been a major accident, uh, since Sarah has opened up, um, which is very fortunate. Um, but, uh, I'd really like to see, um, uh, I know last city council meeting, there was, uh, temporary speed bumps that were pulled from Ross Road. Um, uh, if that may be a potential to have on, uh, Boxwood or, uh, have the engineering department out there, something so, uh, we're not talking about this later when a five-year-old gets, uh, hit by a car or something along those lines. Thank you very much.
Counselor Fuller.
I'm, I'm looking at a satellite map of Boxwood Road right now. And, you know, and any child that gets hit by a vehicle is tragic and... What's the main issue? Is it crossing the road, walking down the side of the road?
Both. So there's, um, you know, during these, so there's four studios, uh, that are at, uh, Vibe Dance. And, um, they're, they have their classes, you know, depending on an hour, forty-five minutes, an hour and fifteen minutes. So there's a steady flow of, you know, roughly for each, uh, classroom, uh, twelve to up to sixteen, uh, kids that are coming out. Then there's another twelve to sixteen kids that are coming in and that's for the four dance studios. So it's roughly from about four o'clock on till about, till about eight thirty. That's where all the action occurs and that's when, um, you know, that's where you see it's dusk. That's when the accidents are going to happen.
Yeah. I also noticed that there's no sidewalks and I, I, I take it and true, uh, merit to staff that whereas with the developments, we require sidewalks, we don't with industrial?
No.
Mr. Sims.
At the time of this, uh, development, there was no policy in place for sidewalks in industrial areas.
So if this development were to go ahead nowadays, there would be requirement for sidewalks?
Mr. Lindsay's the correct one to answer that question, but just around the corner, there's the mixed commercial light industrial, which does have sidewalks on the green rock portion of it.
Yeah, it's, it is unfortunate because people do walk down roads and they take shortcuts. Uh, so... So, so what would, I mean, you talk speed humps, but the reality is that might not be realistic with some of the vehicles that are going down there. What about crosswalks or, uh? I believe staff is talking about, uh, bike lanes, which could be used as walking lanes. So, you know, I, I like to think of them as a combination sidewalk with painted lines as well as something bikes could move into if they were headed down that road.
Yeah. The, the issue at hand is really, you know, when you park there. Um, so you'll have a bunch of cars parked on both sides and then the kids that go across, um, that are running, they're excited. Um, mom and dad, you know, we all know that not every parent is responsible and going to walk their kid across. And it, like I said, it just, it takes one. I don't know what the solution is, but continuing on the way that we're going is definitely not going to be, it's going to be messy.
Thank you. Counselor Armstrong.
I just have a question. Um, how come people aren't using the back parking lot? Like that makes the most sense because they could wait like they do at schools, right?
Yeah. Um, I've put out emails, memos. I've talked personally with parents about that. However, parents don't always listen to me, unfortunately. So they, I've had parents tell me that it's inconvenient to park in my back parking lot because they have to park their car, get out and walk, uh, walk around with their child to the front door. It's inconvenient. So instead, they park across the street.
So for them, it's more convenient for their child to get hit?
Thank you.
It's no offense, but I mean, that's how it comes across to me. Like, you know, you, you've got the parking lots there to do it. And I mean, that's where your child can come out safely and walk around. Like, it just doesn't make sense to me. No offense to people, but I'll apologize now if I've offended people because I probably did. So I'm apologizing. But to me, it just strikes me as, as like ludicrous when you've got all that parking that, that they don't want to take the time to go back to the parking lot because they have to get out of their car.
I've specifically changed the parking and, um, I connected with the city engineers before and we changed the parking. So it's all a one-way, so you can actually drive in and drop off and go.
Yeah, like you've done a great job and that's why I'm just asking that question. Okay.
I think it's a wonderful question.
Thank you.
Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. The parking lot in the back's full as well many times.
That's right.
So whether there's a dance studio, unbelievable dance studio, by the way. People should not be speeding along there. So the problem is take away even the dance, take away vibe, cars are ripping up and down there. And I don't see why, we can think of reasons not to do this. We can think about, oh, it's going to take a study or it's going to take another study and, oh, a speed bump's going to cost this and the speed bump's going to cost that. Well, let's just get, call the Hub City Pavilion to come make some speed bumps or something. And, uh, we have to do something there. And when I hear, um, vehicles, some vehicles won't like it. Well, too bad. No, emergency vehicles will get over. Speed bumps aren't uncommon in any city. We have to do something there because something will happen regardless where people park. And it's not like, it's not like we're not bringing the city of Anima council's attention. It's a, it's a hazard. It's extreme hazard. It's frogger. Exactly as is with human lives. And should people? Sure. It's easy to say what people should do, but nothing, we wouldn't, we could think of a million reasons, but I think we have to do something and it's paramount. Because people, it's ridiculous. I'd love someone to sit there and watch, sit there and just watch these cars rip and roar up and down that road. It's absolutely insane. And it's obviously, it's a shortcut, which was, I don't know if it's designed for that, but anyways it is. And if we don't do something, shame on us. Thank you.
Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. Uh, the same parents that won't use the back parking lot probably shouldn't have rabbits either. The, um, how many parking spaces do you have?
That's a good question. Does it show on that map?
And you have staff obviously that park in there too?
Yeah.
Right. So...
Actually, no, they're, most of my faculty's amazing. They'll park on the other side of the road, down the road.
So at the end of the day, you have somewhere between eighteen and twenty parking spaces available to your people, classes and a drop-off pickup place, which is inadequate.
Yeah.
Okay. And we do have, oh, and I just might add too, that there is an extension going on to Boxwood Road that to my understanding and knowledge has been told they don't need to put a sidewalk along the new portion, what's that street, Counselor Kip?
Where it comes out?
East Wellington, isn't it?
It's along the new, where the new construction is taking place. In any event.
Griffiths.
Griffiths, thank you. That there's no requirement for sidewalk there. It behooves me why we could not experiment with some paving slow humps to see if there is an improvement. So we're doing all, uh, I have a report that indicates that traffic and speeds along that street is normal. Well, I guess if that's normal, then we have a problem. Uh, then we need to address what's normal. And it is a shortcut and it is heavily used and will only get heavier usage, not lesser. So we have to do something. And I don't, I, I don't know what that is, but certainly we have to try to mitigate a potential disaster. We did the same thing at, by Oliver Woods. Uh, we've done the same thing on Ross Road. And I, I will be corrected that yes, but that's not a main collector road or whatever the term is. This one. This one is, that one isn't. We can do it there. We can't do it here. I think we can do it there and I think we should do it there. South of Island Diesel Way could have a speed calming hump. And then further south, uh, another one. So that the section, and I've heard people say, well, why, why did we put a dance studio there? What was wrong with us? What were, what were we thinking?
Well, that was twelve years ago.
That was, so I think what, I don't think very many people thought that we were going to have a roundabout just at the end. And I don't think people thought what has evolved there was going to evolve. So it's nobody's fault. It just is what it is. And I think that we need to do something on Boxwood in front of nineteen sixty-nine or whatever the address is there. Not unlike school zones or otherwise. It would, uh, be, it would be absolutely awful. People bring this to our attention and they have been for months and months and months. And if we don't do something and if something does happen, I don't want to be sitting back here facing you. Thank you.
Counselor Hong.
Thank you. This question is mostly towards, for, for staff. I know that the new section I saw in design advisory, the new section of Boxwood includes bike lanes and I think sidewalks down the, the southern side. Am I correct on that assumption? Yes.
Look to the audience and see Mr. Rose nodding his head. So that is correct. Yes.
So, that being said, what, is it then staff's intention to continue that on Boxwood going north? So it is on the staff plan to have bike lanes down the entire length of Boxwood?
Worship, that, that is correct. There is a plan in place over the next few years to replace a bike lane along the west side, which would be the same side as the dance studio.
Yeah, and I think that's...
That would allow, certainly one of the issues that we have is the narrow lanes, parking on both sides. And so eliminating parking on the west side again, uh, and installing a bike lane would help narrow and hopefully that would calm the traffic as well.
Great. Um, thank you. So, and like you said, that is a few years away and that we've just learned that we actually had some discretionary money, three hundred thousand dollar-ish for slash sidewalk kind of money or whatever we decide that we prioritize. Is, is that correct?
Worship, that's correct. It was prioritized for the Dufferin Crescent sidewalk.
Okay. Great. So I, you know, just following that line, I think we as council can have a conversation. I know that if this is going to continue, it might be, you know, a staff report how important it is for us to continue this piece of the bike lane when this new section is going to get done this year. That we might do the whole thing for the following year. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the delegation. Certainly Boxwood is an increasingly busy road and I appreciate your concerns. Um, I don't have a question for the delegation. I'm prepared to make a motion. I don't, uh, know if others have questions from the delegation first.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Fuller.
This is more through to staff.
Okay. So if you can hold that until, uh, so we, I think we're, we're done. But I, I actually have a couple of questions myself before we move on. Do, I, I used to, I don't know if you remember Chuck, that had the woodworking studio a couple of doors down from you. I thought that was a very strange...
Uh, I thought that was a very strange building, to be honest with you, the way that was designed, and you come in a front foyer and then you go down, and, and so on and so forth, but do you have an entrance to the back end?
Yes.
So people won't, don't have to walk around to the front of the building?
I didn't have a choice on the design of how it was set up, so to access the studios, you have to come in through the front, down the stairs, if you come in through the back, you come in through the dance floor, and you have limited space, so that means that you would have your child in the dance class, and then you would have people traversing through the dance class, if that makes sense?
Mm-hmm, I, I did say it was an odd building, no doubt about it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and so the idea is, is that the parents are supposed to park at the back, and they can walk around, we have access that's blocked off on both sides, it's very clear, it's a slow drive around, like you were sharing, it's very, yeah, it is a safe way to enter, however, yeah, and when the parking lot gets full, but then again, then parents won't escort their child across the street.
Right, so, so what we're actually talking about is the ones, is, is all of the parents that stop on the opposite side of the road, in front of the old Alair building there, and that length, and their kids walk across the street.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller. Uh, no, I think, there's any further questions?
I can wait until a motion's made.
Okay, no further questions from the delegations? Okay, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair, so I know that council has received an email from Mr. Sims that indicates that staff is certainly aware of the situation, and in fact, has given some thought to, to possible remediation. Uh, on the basis of that, I'd like to move to direct staff to report back on options uh, for traffic calming on the section of Boxwood, and improvements to pedestrian safety.
So, it's been moved and seconded, discussion, Counselor Fuller.
I'm curious, uh, with regards to the bike lane thing, why have the bike lane on the west side and eliminate parking on the, on, yeah, why not have the bike lane on the west side and eliminate parking on the east side instead of the other way around? Because if there's no parking on the east side, then there's no reason for people to walk across the road, which would, you know, I don't know, so I'm just curious why it's the opposite way around is what you're looking at.
Uh, we've had a high-level look at, at both options, and we've done a parking review, determine where the highest demand and where the, the greatest impact in shifting it from east to west would be, and the combination of the geometry and the driveways, uh, would actually result in fewer losses of spaces if the bike lane was pushed up against the west side.
Thank you, Counselor Yocum.
Thank you, the bike lane's obviously needed, and I'm, and I'm gonna support it, well, in the plans, but regardless, that isn't deteriorate a fact from the speeders, you give a bike lane there, there's still gonna be a car issue, take the dance studio away, there's still gonna be a car issue, people speeding up and down, so, one, one obvious way to tackle also reduce speed limit, is that up to us or our CMP speed limits? Is make it a thirty, make it a thirty like a schoolyard, and, and during certain timeframes, a day at least, so that's one suggestion, because I don't know if the city, this subject's been taken very serious, it takes one kid there, and what are we gonna do, like someone said earlier? So make it speed bumps, is obvious, we got some of those ones we had over on Ross Town Road, or Ross Road somewhere, we have speed bumps, we can make a speed limit, apparently we can do ourselves, uh, the bike lane is obviously needed, and that's not gonna slow down speeders, so we, I don't know, maybe I'm just banging my head against the wall for no reason, but I think we have to do something, thank you.
Thank you, I, for myself, I, I think we need to make sure that whatever measures we take are effective, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, they must be effective, uh, you put a crosswalk in, it costs you a few thousand dollars, will it be effective? People are killed in Nanaimo with crosswalks, at crosswalks, all the time, too many people are killed. Um, the only thing we can do is we, if we're gonna put a crosswalk in, we have to make sure that it's a, that it's an actuated crosswalk, an activated crosswalk, with big flashing yellow lights, but that, uh, you know, it still doesn't suggest that if somebody parks down by the Winter Building, because that's the only big space available, their child is not gonna walk up to the crosswalk, their child will be running across the street right there, so we have to make sure that this is effective, and that's coming from someone who was, you know, came about that far from, after darting behind the school bus when I was six years old, almost being smucked by a car on a busy street, so I know. Uh, in any case, thank you, Counselor Yocum.
Yeah, just quickly, again, I come up with ideas, I don't wanna belabor and bore one, but four to eight hundred meters away, we have a roundabout, put one more there. I know it's gonna inconvenience, we live in an inconvenient society, but it's worth it, a roundabout's just right there, do one more, obviously the trucks that people are concerned about use that roundabout, so what's one more? Thank you.
Counselor Fuller.
I'm stuck on this, uh, bike lane on the west side and leaving parking on the east side, uh, I, even if you put a bike lane in on the west side, people are still gonna cross the roads to get to the east side to get to their vehicle, whether it's slowing traffic down to the actual fifty K, uh, you can still kill someone at fifty K, you can kill someone at thirty K, and to me, it just seems like, okay, so it, it, it might look weird, but just shift the yellow line over a bit too. If you have to repaint the yellow line in order to put a bike lane in on the, the east side, and allow parking in on the west side, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to do it the opposite way around, because, yeah, the bike lane may slow traffic down, but people will still cross. Anyway, I'll leave that up to the floor.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thanks, Chair, and I was just going to point out again that the, the intent of the motion is for staff to come back with ideas and options and rationales, and I think we're getting into, uh, getting into that type of debate now tonight when we don't really need to, let's hear what staff has to recommend and why, and if we don't like it or have other ideas, then at the time, we can, we can debate further, but, uh, let's get something back from staff with some ideas on how we can start to improve the situation.
Thank you, Counselor Hahn.
Thank you, one last comment, I guess I should have said it to Sarah and stuff, but, you know what, just let your staff park across the street, tell them to park there so there's no parking spots for the parents to stop off at. Like, you know, sorry to be greedy, but park, get your staff to park across the street, and they can't stop there, because you know what, if I stop and I let my kid out, at least I've stopped, not pulled over and let my kid run across the street, so I think in the, in term of doing anything, tell your staff to park across the street and take up that parking spot, that's all I can suggest right now until we get a staff report, thank you.
Thank, thank you, so there's a motion on the floor, call a question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries, thank you, thank you very much. So the next delegation is Mr. Kenneth Young.
Good day, uh, my name is Kenneth Young, CD, um, I am a service officer at Branch two-five-six Legion, I am also the chemical defoliating advisor for Canadian Veterans Advocacy and about twelve other veterans groups. Um, this year, uh, in Sep, or, excuse me, last year, in September, I was invited to go to Korea to, uh, the WARP World Peace Summit, uh, I'll explain all, all these acronyms very shortly. Um, when I was there, I, and I've seen lots of peace movements, and most of them are destined to fail because they didn't go about it right, this one, I think, did go about it right, because the first thing they did is they got religious leaders in, twenty thousand of them to be exact, and they got them to come to an agreement on how they can live together. I mean, they brought every religion I can think of and an awful lot that I never heard of, but they did come to an agreement three years ago, and it is, um, the second thing this group did was that they brought the, the past presidents and past rulers of countries in, uh, who no longer owed to the corporations, who also came up with, uh, political reasons why it should go ahead, and then they brought the lawyers in, and they wrote up ten articles for peace, and in those articles, there's, there's thirty-eight clauses, and I've got a copy of that, it's called the Declaration of Peace and Cessation of War, which will be going to the United Nations to be voted on and brought into international law. Um, let me explain who they are first, HWPL, which I need my glasses to read what the acronym means, because it's long and convoluted, and the reason I told you about the religious leaders is because the name of it goes by it, Heavenly Culture, World Peace, Restoration of Light, that's what the HWPL stands for, they are lawyers, government and religious leaders, and all who are not covered by the other two groups that are with these. The other two groups are IWPG, which is International Women's Peace Group, now, a lot of people get their hackles up when you say a women's group, but the whole idea behind a women's group was to have it, um, because the only group of people besides veterans and soldiers who want more war gone forever is probably mothers, and it was very hard to get a mothers' group together if it was filled with men. Secondly, two-thirds of the women population of the world would not be allowed to join a group that had men in, so I think it was a good idea to have a women's group only. The third group is IPYG, which stands for International Peace Youth Group, now, that doesn't mean children, although it includes children, it means all the ages from twelve up to forty-four, in other words, anybody who would be drafted to fight these wars. It was felt that they needed to have a voice on whether they felt like fighting these wars, and so you had the mothers who didn't want their children killed, you have the youth, which includes people up to forty-four who would have been drafted, and you have the HWPL, which includes anybody else, including the male population, sorry, but we don't get to go on the other two. The WARP, which is the World Alliance of Religious for Peace, and that was the WARP Summit, W A R P. I was surprised when I got there, uh, there was about two thousand delegates, um, I only had two speeches to do, and that was okay, but on the final day, or the eighteenth of September, they had what they called the WARP Peace, World Peace Summit, which is the remembrance of signing of the religious groups that they agreed on, uh, certain things of how to live together. Um, there was fifty-five thousand in the stadium of members, and, and there was approximately two hundred thousand others that were connected through, um, video link from around the world, hundred and ten countries to be exact, um, there was five cities in the United States that were involved, including Washington DC, but there was none from Canada, so I'm wondering, why is Canada the country who actually sort of invented peacekeeping, and who was very instrumental in making the United Nations in the first place, why there is no city participation from Canada in the World Peace Group? Now, I'll tell you exactly how big it is, the International Peace Youth Group, at this time, has five point seven million members, the International Women's Group asked for and got ten million signatures in support of the WPC, uh, W, uh, excuse me, DPCW, to present to the United Nations, that is the one for the ten articles and whatnot, the cessation, uh, the, the Declaration of Peace and Cessation of War. What I am trying to suggest, and I've got a, a paper of each of these for you too, so that you can look them up, because all you really have to do is Google any one of these groups and, uh, with YouTube, and up comes dozens of movies that you can watch, I was gonna show you some here tonight, but I was told you don't have the connections to do it. What I'm trying to suggest is that the city get involved, it, it could be something like your, your, um, bathtub races, you know, where the parks get involved, um, where at the end of the day, on, on the eighteenth of Sept, September, there, or it's the seventeenth of September night here, where you get involved, sort of, you, in a, a video link with Korea, that the city of Nanaimo can become the peace city of Canada. I think it could be bigger than the bathtub race, if you get at it, I'm working right now with three groups within the city who are in the process of trying to join, one of them is the, the Unity Hall, they do the, I, I believe, uh, you, your worship, open the ceremonies for them on the Interna, uh, United Nations Peace Day, um, which is the twenty-first, which is not that much of a difference, so it, they can be combined, so it works together, and if possible, use this or the conference area that, down there, that you can have the video link, that the people who are involved in it can actually, because what happened is, they were watching the finishing or the closing ceremony in Korea, and we in Korea were actually watching them in the cities back where they were coming from, and so it was, it was overwhelming, if, if, if nothing else to say, you know, when you sit there and you talk to somebody, and there's two hundred thousand people listening to you, you just have to sit there and wonder.
I need to let you know you've got a minute.
Pardon?
I need to let you know you have a minute left, you need to wrap up.
Okay, um, peace is important, we have articles of war, we have actually, as civilizations, civilized countries, agreed on how to kill each other, what we don't have is articles of peace. I would like city of Nanaimo, my home city, to be one city of peace, thank you.
Thank you very much, any questions for the delegation? Counselor Beswick.
Thank you, um, Ken, thanks very much, really powerful, and appreciate you bringing this to us, um, it will take some time, I, I think, honestly, for me to, uh, grasp the, what you've presented to us, and I, I'd be looking to my colleagues here if, whether or not, this is something that would be driven through, potentially, potentially driven through a committee, through, um, Parks and Rec, um, other stakeholders in our community, VIU, um, given their position, if you will, in, in the community and their outreach, but I certainly think it merits and warrants more discussion on how to proceed, and the methods in which may be utilized to, to proceed, and I don't know if we need a motion or anything like that, because if, if we do nothing right now, then it just goes away, unless we wish to put this on an agenda at, for a later time. Um, and, and again, at a, maybe it's a different committee than this one, I don't know, but I don't think it should just go away. But I don't think it should just go away. And that would, that would worry me if we don't do something with this concept. So, yeah, so Counselor Hong, Community Vitality, I don't know if there's interfacing with VIU and the school district and the RDN and the city, when there's a next meeting of the minds to put it on the next agenda, because it's not just the city. This is the regional district, this is school district 68, this is children, this is Bank Rowan University, this is international students at the, at university and so on and so forth. So I think that it has potential and legs, if we allow it, to have more than just us. And we need to encourage that, in my opinion. So I leave it with staff. I don't know what to, I don't know what other to, to say or suggest.
Thank you. And I'm sure we'd appreciate your information, Mr. Young. Mr. Memmer.
Thank you, worship. Two comments. The first one, I think, if you want to keep this alive, probably want to refer this to the Public Safety Committee. But on a strategic level, I think the, it's an issue that is a community issue that requires participation of other, other groups, other institutions. So probably, I, I, I don't know what the avenue to engage with others would be, but it's one that I think would need to involve, like the Counselor Beswick is saying, school district, churches and the other organizations that the, the gentleman has spoken to. So I think to keep it alive, if it goes to Public Safety, at that point, maybe some options of engaging with other stakeholders may, may actually take some form. The, the last comment I would make is, is that it, it is very possible, in this side of the world, that some have not, they've grown to maturity without experiencing war. There is some of us who, at very early ages of our lives, experienced war, so we know what, what that means. So hopefully, I think it's something that the city could support in principle, but it, it requires, I think, the, the participation of an expanded stakeholder framework. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick, if you don't mind, first time speakers? Okay, thank you. Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Young, for your information. You mentioned it during your presentation and it seems to me this would be a, maybe a good next step. And, and, and that would be for you to, to go back and, and talk again with the organizers of the local international day of peace ceremony and celebration that we have every year here in town. See how your information fits in with, with what they try to do and maybe then come back to the city with, with more concrete ways that the city can support an initiative moving forward. Does that make sense to you?
Yes. Patricia was going to be here today from Unity, but she had other requirements. She's actually, I've had a meeting with them and they're actually waiting to see what the city does. They would like to be involved. She's getting a little disappointed because it's not growing and nothing seems to be done. When you see, please, when you get the pieces of paper, go ahead and look at, at, at your computers and, and watch some of them. When you see 200,000 people crying for peace, or 200,000, nothing, 5 million, you'll see that it's, it, it does become overwhelming. It, it's, it's something good. And I think this one has a chance because they're going about it in the right way. They're doing it legally, they're doing it religiously, and they're doing it governmentally. So they're not going out at, do it my way, here's a bunch of signs and all that stuff, you know? They're doing it the proper way, the way it has to be done. And they're changing the laws, they're trying to change the laws in the United Nations, international law and war. Because let's face it, it's not working, the ones we got. Anyway.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. Just one final suggestion. I would make yourself a delegation at the Regional District of Nanaimo's Board as well, because you capture extension to Cedar, to Gabriola, to Bowser, to Coombs, to Parksville, to Qualicum and so on. So I think it would be, to me, your message is, is as much about awareness.
Correct.
And if there's not an awareness or an understanding, then nobody knows what, I shouldn't say nobody, but not as many people know the, what you're trying to advance. So I would strongly encourage you to do that. And maybe there's an opportunity to go to the board meeting that I think is quarterly or whatever it is at VIU. Because if you don't start getting your messaging out to a broader group, then you, you may not move as quickly as you, you would like to.
Oh, I've got two groups to join in Ontario already, so that was nice. And I'm trying here too.
I'm just saying, so the RDN, Regional District of Nanaimo, I would strongly encourage that you become a delegate there as well.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you.
Counselor Ken.
Bank Rowan University, could be a tremendous contact too.
I, I've been thinking about that because they have a large Korean population there too, so.
A large population and they push issues like this, and I believe it'd be a great one for VIU, maybe approach the directors and put a presentation into them. That might be a really good, another good portion of it.
Well, thank you for your idea.
The toughest thing for me is it's the religions seem to be fighting around the world. That's the ones that are fighting because of a belief over humanity. Thanks for your effort.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
So we now move into question period. We have one speaker signed up, Mr. Bill Manners.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Bill Manners, from the city of Nanaimo. Earlier, someone was talking about fees and charges being done for police checks. And I'm just wondering if, if city council is aware that it's not just one or two checks that some people get done. Myself personally, I have had six done in the last year for various things that I volunteer for, for volunteering for the Advocate of the Seniors of BC, Emergency of DC, the City of Nanaimo, EOC, working with that. Anything that involves working around children, anything involved with working around with seniors. So if you take all those people that live in Nanaimo, that work in those various things, those are the people that you're looking at affecting with this. The charge is not a city charge. Were you aware of that? The city is not charging anything. It's prohibited by law, by, by law, to charge for a chauffeur's permit. I pay $25 for a background check. If my name, my first name, matches a birth date of a sex offender, so William and my birth date matches a sex offender anywhere in the country, I'm obligated to be fingerprinted. The RCMP charges another 25. It's nothing to do with the city of Nanaimo. Were you aware of that? So then why are we even talking about doing something about it?
Counselor Armstrong.
The RCMP doesn't charge. The city charges. The RCMP collects the money and then it goes to the city. The RCMP is not allowed to charge for that.
In that case, I have been told the wrong thing for, since 1974. When do I get my check?
The RCMP doesn't charge. It's, it's, the, the fees are set by the municipality and then they collect it for the municipality and then I believe they get forwarded to finance. Correct, Mr. Memmer? Yeah. No, the RCMP doesn't charge. They used to do them for free till the cities decided they wanted to charge.
The first year I got my chauffeur's permits in 1985, it was, 1975, it was free. 1976, it was $10. It eventually increased to 25. Every single time, I was told by the city staff employee at the RCMP station that it was not a city fee. The bylaw used to read, right at the bottom of the chauffeur's permit bylaw, there is to be no municipal fee for getting a chauffeur's permit. So I think a lot of things need to be looked into if you're going to move into a direction where you might not want to go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Hong, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. All is in favor? Thank you. We're adjourned.